So, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. I'm going to do the flag salute, so if you'll please stand, put your right hand over your heart, and face the nearest flag, and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And thank you. You may be seated, and may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Nigar.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Shrank.
And I'm here.
Okay, we're gonna move right into the business item, which is to conduct an introductory workshop regarding race, equity, diversity, and inclusion, or the READY initiative. And City Manager Adams, do you have a report for us?
I do, thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. It's it's good to be with you on this Friday morning, and certainly on this topic. Just to set the table briefly before allowing Randy to give a staff report and introduce our guests. You will recall, earlier this summer, on the heels of the murder of George Floyd, this city council discussed the difficult topic of race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And then from these conversations, the council provided clear direction to us staff on what you wanted accomplished and your level of desired participation. You adopted a READY framework with multiple components, much of which has been accomplished, or nearly complete. And they included things such as placing on the agenda and discussing and listening, or we call normalizing the conversation. You continued listening to stakeholders and community members. You passed a resolution denouncing racism in all its forms. And then most recently, you created a brand-new READY commission. You, and interest has been solicited. Applications have come in, and you will be interviewing many, many folks in less than two weeks to be seated and start their work in January. And then lastly, you discussed continuing education on race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And internally amongst us staff, we have chosen to not describe this as training per se, but rather continuing education as we hope and we anticipate this conversation and learning to continue. And that's the other thing I heard loud and clear from the city council was a strong desire toward sustainable actions, of which this is, and much of what I previously mentioned touches our culture, and it touches our organization, and it raises the awareness for us as leaders. Which brings us here today. And I've had the privilege of meeting Leon and talking with him and his team over the past few weeks. And it would be my hope, and I believe this time together, will be very meaningful for us all as leaders in our community. I do have members of my staff listening in today. But this meeting is dedicated specifically to the city council. And I am planning to have an opportunity to pick up with Leon and the National League of Cities after January 1 for city staff. So we'll be picking up that training after the first of the year. So, at this time, I'd like to hand off to Randy for a proper background and introductions of our guests from the National League of Cities. So, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, councilmembers, staff, and community members. On July 14, 2020, the city council approved a Race, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Initiative. This is what we refer to in-house as our READY initiative for the city of Temecula. The initiative is broadly based on the Race, Equity, and Leadership REAL program offered through the National League of Cities, which we refer to as NLC. As a part of the READY initiative, the city council approved items in three phases related to ongoing education, communication, policy review, resolution adoption, and the creation of a commission. The approval of the various phases ensured that the important conversations and hard work around race, equity, diversity, and inclusion will continue well into the future in a sustainable and meaningful manner. As a part of the READY initiative, on August 11, 2020, the city council adopted a resolution supporting the fair and equal treatment of all human beings, denouncing racism in all its forms, and declaring its commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion, and gave general direction on their preferences for the creation of a READY commission, the recruitment for which has now closed, and appointments are expected at a special meeting to be held on November 19, 2020. One of the next items in the READY work plan in Phase 1 of the initiative was ongoing education in this space. That brings us to this introductory workshop this morning, which will be conducted by the NLC REAL program staff. I will now briefly introduce the NLC staff who are here this morning with us to facilitate this learning and dialogue opportunity, and then turn the workshop over to them. First, we have Leon Andrews. Leon was appointed as the inaugural director for the Race, Equity, and Leadership REAL program at NLC. Prior, Leon served as the Senior Fellow and Program Director at the NLC Institute for Youth Education and Families, where he led the institute's youth development work with mayors and other municipal leaders across the country. Leon has an extensive background working in government, the community, the private sector, and academia for the last 25 years, including the United States Department of Justice, United States Senator Barbara Miltowski, the United States Public Interest Research Group, the Allegheny County Department of Human Services, Youth Build Pittsburgh, and the Development Corporation of Columbia Heights, PricewaterhouseCoopers, and as an adjunct professor in the Department of Political Science at Eastern Michigan University. He received his bachelor's in political science from Howard University, his master's in public policy and management from Carnegie Mellon University, and is a PhD candidate in the Urban and Regional Planning Program at Michigan University. Hi, Leon. Next, we have Gloria Reyes. Gloria currently serves as Madison School Board President and has served as deputy mayor to Public Safety, Civil Rights, Community Services, Public Health, and City Attorney's Office between 2014 and 2019. In these roles, Gloria was responsible for policy development, management, and community outreach and administrative priorities in public safety disciplines. In 2015, the mayor appointed Gloria as interim director for the Department of Civil Rights, where she led and managed the Affirmative Action and Equal Opportunities Divisions and Racial Equity Social Justice Initiative. Gloria is also a former law enforcement officer for the Madison, Wisconsin Police Department, and group member of the officers who train law enforcement on cultural identity and bias. She is a longtime resident of Madison, Wisconsin, and obtained her bachelor's in Behavioral Sciences and Law and Criminal Justice and master's in public administration from the University of Washington. Hello, Gloria. And finally, we have Ian Snyder. Ian has worked in a variety of local governments before arriving at NLC and REAL. Ian worked for the city council in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, helped the borough of Dormont, Pennsylvania develop its five-year municipal strategic plan, and served as a mayoral fellow in the city of Chicago. Ian transitioned into the role of senior program specialist with REAL after graduating from Heinz College at Carnegie Mellon University with a master's in public policy and management. Ian also holds a bachelor's in political science with a neuroscience minor from the University of Pittsburgh. He grew up and around Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and recently returned to build a life and community in Philadelphia. Ian, clearly, there's nothing going on in Philadelphia today. So, with that, Leon, I will turn it over to you to go ahead and get this facilitation started.
Madam City Clerk, just real quick, point of order before we start. I want to inquire, how many members of the public are watching? Do we know?
I do not. It is live on Zoom and Podcast, and it was agendized.
Okay. Don't they have to sign into Zoom? Can IT let us know, or we can't tell?
We can't, right now, we can't tell because it is viewable on the TemeculaCA/tv.
Oh, we're streaming also, yeah.
And we are live streaming as well. Okay, with that, Leon, just really quickly, I'll just ask Councilmember Matt Ron if you can just wave for the NLC team. So that's Councilmember Ron, Mayor Protem Edwards introduced herself earlier, Councilmember Mike Nigar, and Councilmember Zach Shrank.
And I actually served on the NLC Human Development Committee for about seven or eight years. It was a long time. It was really good.
Yeah, and I know, Leon, you'll probably remember Councilmember Ron Roberts and Councilmember Jeff Comitara, who are long-term proponents of NLC as well. So, with that, Leon, we will go ahead and turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Randy and Erin, for those introductions, and it's an honor to be with you guys today, to be able to spend some time and share about the work that we're doing and your commitment as a city to really advancing this work in Temecula. You've heard, you already did the background and introductions of who we are, so I don't really have to spend time kind of doing that. The only thing I would say that I didn't hear that is most important in my bio is that I am married to an amazing woman, Dr. Christine Andrews, and we have three beautiful daughters, Jessica, Julia, and Joanna. My oldest is 14, and virtual learning, all of them in virtual learning. The middle is 12, and the youngest is eight. And that is the most important, being dad and husband is the most important thing with everything else you heard. That being said, we have a packed couple hours with you, a few hours with you, and really want to jump right in and really talk about what our objectives will be, the time we have together. We have we have four objectives that we want to be able to accomplish today. So I want to just kind of walk them through with you, so you kind of know where we are and what we're trying to accomplish. So, our first, and it's not necessarily in this order, but we want to be able to create a space where we're developing a shared understanding of key terminology, racial equity terminology, you know, concepts and frames, to be willing to be able to do that. It's going to be so important, and just how do you normalize? I think that's what your city, as your city manager was saying earlier, just so important of creating, continuing that space of normalizing. The second is spending some time understanding history and current events as we understand issues of institutional and systemic racism in America. And so we're gonna spend some time really leaning in and hopefully having a little bit of a discussion with you as we create some spaces of interaction, bringing some of that history in and some dialogue and conversation. The third is introduce to you a framework that we hope that serves as a helpful framework for really building on the work as the city continues to move forward with this work, and as READY permission starts to kind of form itself. Like, what's the work to normalize, operationalize, and organize racial equity in how you govern? And so we're gonna model some of that normalizing with you today. But there's so much normalizing that, as you heard from your city manager, that you guys have already started and kind of have recognized the need to continue to create spaces for doing that, and also doing that with staff, and even engaging with the community in that space. And then we'll also, at the end of our time together, hopefully at least acknowledge kind of what some of the operationalizing and organizing looks like as you think about continuing this work within the city. And as part of that operationalizing, we'll introduce to you a tool, a racial equity tool, that we use as part of aspects of our training and technical assistance with cities. So, we hope that that at least serves as a starting point for understanding how you are centering this in the work that you're doing. And so that for us is kind of our objectives, and as we lean into this work as your facilitators, it's really important for us that we honor our learning environment, that we think is even important as we're engaging with you. And so we just really wanted to kind of call out these five areas for the learning environment. So, the first is kind of the willingness to be brave in this space, and just knowing how important it is in order to grow, acknowledging the need for this to be a space where people are willing to be brave, and really to share kind of the thoughts that are guiding you as you're learning. But in that space, acknowledging, you know, we're obviously a small enough group, so, you know, we know that there should be plenty of opportunities for people to offer what you can, but also, you know, creating spaces that you're asking for what you need. Knowing that all of us are on this journey, including Ian, Gloria, and myself. So all of us, even as your facilitators, we don't come before you feel like we have everything to offer. There may be things that we may be asking you to help us understand how we grow, how this is playing out in Temecula. So just wanted to name that as the learning environment. And then, what is learned here leaves here. And so we hope that there is something that you're learning from this space. And in part of our learning environment, how important it is to be willing to share and hopefully begin to have conversations, whether it's tonight with family or friends, you know, just kind of reflecting on some of the content that, you know, that was kind of shared with you today, and how important that is as really creating that learning environment.
Leon, if, I'm sorry to interrupt, actually, if you can go to the bigger screen, right now, we can go ahead and see all your notes on the side.
Oh, thank you.
Good, I was gonna ask that, too.
I did not know you were seeing that screen. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah.
Now I can see it.
We're good.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate that. So, yes, I apologize for that, but glad everyone can see this better. So I was gonna, we walked through the first three learning environments, the Brave Space, the Offering What You Can, Ask For What You Need, What Is Learned Here, Leaves Here. Then the last two are, you know, just wanting to acknowledge how important it is, you know, to do this work, there obviously will be times where conversations will be uncomfortable. Sitting with some of this information can be uncomfortable. But just how important it is to lean in when it's uncomfortable, and really be willing to stay engaged. And just, again, it's a small enough group, and we hope that that continues to be the dynamic that we have with you over these next few hours. And then the other last one in this learning environment is that there is no assumption as we start to engage with you in this foundational training, that you come in with a history, or you, that you're coming in with a foundational already. So just acknowledging that each of us, each of you are starting from where you are, and that's okay as we're leaning in, and no need to feel like you are not qualified to engage or to speak or to be a part of the dialogue. And so just really wanted to name that. I want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with that, and let me just make sure I'm seeing you, and making sure as does this, does this learning environment for you guys, does this work for you? Those five areas, are you guys okay with that as a learning environment? Okay. Yes of affirmation? Awesome.
Yeah, I'm curious, yeah, I think it's a great start. I've got a lot of questions, but I'm sure that'll unfold as we go.
Great, great, awesome. All right, well, I'm gonna turn it over to Ian to kind of really do something that's a tradition for us here at NLC as we do these trainings. And so Ian, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Leon, and good morning, everyone. Good morning, Temecula Council. Thank you for letting us join you today in this next step in your journey as an elected body and on behalf of the city of Temecula. As Leon mentioned, we have instituted a land acknowledgement in all of the trainings that we do. We think it's important to recognize all of our history, and in many cases, that starts with stolen land and stolen labor throughout, across the United States throughout our history. And to make sure that we recognize it wherever we are. So, though we cannot join you all in Temecula in person, we very much want to make sure that we're recognizing and grounding ourselves in the history, the indigenous history of Temecula. Ancestors of the Temecula Indians were here as early as 900 AD. The people from here to the coast who shared the same language and culture became known as the Louiseanos because many of their villages were once under the influence of Mission San Luis Rey. The Pachanga band of Louiseano Indians has called the Temecula Valley home for more than 10,000 years. Bedrock mortars, stone tools, pottery, and rock art are still found in Riverside and San Diego counties. These artifacts are evidence of a long history and a rich culture that existed before the arrival of the Spanish missionaries. By the time the missionaries were secularized in 1834, the population had been decimated, and many Louiseanos were living in small, isolated villages throughout the Temecula Valley. The Mexican-American War, the Temecula Massacre, California Statehood, and the failed promises of the Treaty of Temecula took an added toll on the original inhabitants of this land. Despite losing nearly everything they owned in the Temecula Eviction of 1875, the Temecula people found ways to survive. The Pachanga Reservation was established in 1882, and the struggle for survival continued through the early 20th century. 1919 marked the establishment of the Mission Indian Federation, the first Native American civil rights group in Southern California. The MIF fought for Indian civil rights for over 50 years during the US government's Indian termination policy period. With the passage of the Southern California Indian Land Transfer Act in 1988, the Pachanga Reservation now stands at over 7,000 acres. Today, tribal government operations and cultural resource management exists to honor fully and protect the land and cultural sites. In their own words, "The Pachanga tribe invests in preserving and practicing our many traditional ways. Knowing our customs and traditions connects us to our worldview as individuals and a community. We will continue to help our people and the communities of the Temecula Valley remain self-sufficient and forward-thinking for many years to come. This land was their home long before we made it ours." I also want to provide some background as to REAL, and where we've come, and what grounds us in the work we do with local leaders as yourselves and within the National League of Cities. Our mission as the Race, Equity, and Leadership Department is to build local leaders' knowledge and capacity to eliminate racial disparities, heal racial divisions, and build more equitable communities. And we recognize that we can do that as we are now, and we can also think about how we equip local leaders to think of things in a systematic way, and we will get plenty more into that as we proceed. And our vision, that what that mission drives us toward, is a nation which every local elected official is equipped to effectively lead and serve an inclusive, thriving, and healthy community. And the network, we've been able to do this within, over the past six years, has grown and grown. We are now well over 200 municipalities, cities, towns, and villages across the country. And we've been able to do this in a variety of ways, in providing training, in helping cities, towns, and villages develop equity plans for their governments, in our work with the WK Calab Foundation around truth, racial healing, and transformation, which is a big part of my portfolio, in response to incidents of racial tension, in partnership with the Wells Fargo Foundation, and helping cities respond to government-involved, systems-driven racial tension. And in large part with the Obama Foundation and a number of other organizations in our work around boys and young men of color, and improving outcomes for boys and young men of color across a variety of indicators.
Great, thank you, Ian. All right, so we are going to do kind of our first kind of interactive activity with you. We wanted to start off by just doing some acknowledgements of of the land, of who we are, before we kind of jump in and start, kind of wanted to start with an activity that can maybe create a space for some discussion. So this activity, if we were all together, we would be standing up on our feet and having a chance to kind of practice with our feet, this exercise. But we have modified this into a virtual, into our virtual world. So it's called Lay It On The Line, Laying It On The Line. And as you can see, there's a line there. On one side of the line, there's strongly disagree. On the other side of the line, there's strongly agree, and then there's kind of neutral in the middle. And so you could be leaning one way or the other depending on the statement. And so we're gonna put up two different statements. Gloria's gonna kind of read out the first statement. And there are only two rules that apply in this exercise, that we're gonna maybe do for about 10, 15 minutes. So, the first rule is there's no right or wrong answer to the statement, right? And so in this space, the statements are actually intentionally designed to really have different things that you react to based upon the statement. And so it's not intended to be a right or wrong answer. So that's rule number one. And then rule number two is that you can't ask anybody to interpret it for you, right? You can't ask us to, kind of, what do we mean when we say this, or your colleagues. You can't ask them to interpret it. It's like, based upon however you responded to the statement, you will kind of signal where you are, and then maybe share kind of what about the statement puts you where you were on the line, all right? So first rule is that there is no right or wrong answer, and then second rule is that you can't ask anyone to interpret it, all right? All right, now here's how it works virtually. Now, there is a feature, it should be on your computer, we hope. If you go, if you can see on my screen, at the top of your screen, there is a feature called annotate. If you click on annotate, and it takes you to a set of options, and if you go to the one that says stamp, and then kind of select which one, which symbol you want to use, all right? And then, once you have that symbol, just kind of place it on the line to see if it's working for you. All right, see, two, three, four, all right, see? That might be one person doing that many times. Okay, it looks like it's working for everybody. Perfect.
No? Well, I gotta find out which one's mine, so, how do you?
Do you know which symbol did you choose?
No, so I'm checking, can I erase?
Yeah, well, we can, we'll clear it for a moment, but why don't you just click on it for a little bit and see if it's popping up as you're clicking on it?
Okay, hold on a second. Let's do... Did it come up?
We're not... I didn't see it. Oh, are you the blue, was that the arrow?
No, I was the diamond. Let me try that again.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay, working on it.
Okay. You're the...
Did the diamond come up yet?
Oh, did you go to draw, um, don't see a diamond. Did you go to stamp and choose from one of these six options? Like, there's an arrow, there's a check mark, there's an X, there's a star, a heart, or question mark?
No, did neither. Let's try again. View options, annotate, what's my next move?
Then go to stamp?
Stamp, okay, and then I get to choose?
Yep.
Okay, all right, I'm there. Let's see. All right. I'm the star. Did the star come up?
Not yet.
Oh, Mike, you clicked on his, you clicked on his toolbar.
No, I'm clicking on mine. Sorry, everyone.
No, take your time.
I'll try it again. All right, I'm choosing star, but let me choose the right arrow. Did that come up? Does that mean?
No, once you click on it, then you have to now click on the line itself. So once you've selected the, your symbol, if you go down to the area...
I got it, I'm the star.
There you go. All right, so everybody else has gotten it? Okay, this is beautiful. Now, what I'm gonna do is gonna, I'm gonna clear it, so we can start all over again. And I will turn it over to Gloria to kind of lead us through the first statement.
Hey, thank you, Leon. All right, remember, there's no right or wrong answers, so we are ready. The first question, hiring and promotion decisions should be based solely on merit. Hiring and promotion decisions should be based solely on merit. And just click, you know, strongly disagree, neutral, strongly agree. Okay, we got some... We got a star here, strongly agree. We got an arrow here in between, neutral, and strongly agree. We got a neutral check. I'll be waiting on anybody. Let's see here.
Yeah, we're missing one. There we go.
Me, yeah, there's me.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
That's it, it's only four.
Okay, so let's just, let's move, let's focus on the neutral, and just have a conversation around that, like, who in the neutral wants to volunteer, and let us know why you're, why you checked neutral?
Oh, that was, that was me. You know, solely on merit's a tough, tough call. There's a lot of other features for employees. So, you know, whether it's, you know, ability to run teams, ability to interact with other employees, you know, their workplace environment. I mean, there's a lot of features that if you're, if you're gonna rank folks and provide, you know, any kind of benefit to that, whether it's a, you know, a pathway to leadership or an enhanced salary, you know, basing it solely on sort of performance metrics in the workplace isn't always the only thing, and at least in my opinion.
That's what I said, too. I mean, that's what I think. There are so many other things to consider, and we know by example that Temecula's very careful. Aaron and his team are very careful about who they select. They go through a rigorous process, and we have fantastic teams because it's based on, you know, who's a good fit, who can bring their talent, but is also a really good fit with everyone else. So, yeah, it's not all merit-based.
Great, thank you both for sharing. So really, other factors to consider when making these hiring and promotional decisions. Thank you for that. What about the arrow here between neutral and strongly agree?
Yeah, so that was me. And I kind of fell in the... And I kind of fell in the middle. I felt like, you know, certainly can't be, be the only decision, obviously. But I wasn't sort of too neutral on it. I do think it's important to be qualified, but then just acknowledge how we, how we all get there, and how some, some, some people are able to get there a little bit easier. So I, I just felt like, hey, we need to at least acknowledge, or at least I feel like I need to acknowledge just some of the prejudice, prejudices that we, that we see in, in hiring practices and promotion and whatnot, so. Kind of right in the middle there.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Zach, for sharing. What about strongly agree?
That was me. And, and I don't necessarily disagree with my colleagues. I, I actually agree with them, but I, I also think that before you can get to fit and actually evaluate the other things that were mentioned, you have to have the quals. Results don't lie.
So what I'm hearing from Michael and Zach is really the qual, the qual, having, being qualified to do the job is, is really an important factor. But acknowledging that in, within the process, that there is some bias that may be part of the, the process. And great, okay. Anybody else want to share?
Yeah, I guess, just other reaction Gloria to, which I appreciate everyone commenting. I love the fact that we have this nice small group where everyone gets a chance to kind of share their thoughts. And it's interesting just to hear between Michael and who's the one left, and Matt, that there isn't a lot of disagreement in kind of your points, right? And so, and the reason why we do these exercises, it's easy to kind of think that we are strongly, we are, we are making two very separate points, but we actually are not, right? It's the there, and so it's easy to think that you may be, someone might be neutral on it, and you might strongly agree, but the difference in the conversation is not that far off from each other. Right? And just important to kind of name, as we talk about these issues, how that could happen. And also to acknowledge too, that the word merit has its own set of trigger, triggers for people. Right? Because it comes with a history, right? The, the term itself is connected to, you know, you know, California law stuff from affirmative action and, and and whether people are, you know, what, what do we mean when we say merit? I mean, it's all, all of those things that are tied into that, right? And knowing that there could be trigger words that actually may be that you're reacting to that make you feel strongly one way or the other, and how easy that is to, to happen as you're having these kinds of conversations. So we just wanted to name that as well.
May I add a quick comment? Through the years, it's funny, what you just said, we as a body typically well, close to a hundred percent arrive at the same place by our deliberations. And, and, and we tend to do that. We listen to each other and we end up communicating exactly what you just said. That, that at first we seem we're apart, we usually come right together and say the same thing.
Not that we don't have disagreements sometimes, but we always manage to work those out.
Yeah.
Great, that's great. Alright, well, let's move on to our second one. Alright, you guys ready? I believe we can end racial inequity. I believe we can end racial inequity. Strongly disagree, leaning that way, neutral, or leaning strongly agree, or feeling strongly agree. I believe we can end racial inequity.
I wish we could ask you questions.
This one always triggers that. So, well, this is where we'll, we'll come out in discussion. So each of you have now voted, so Mary Ann, I will start with you, because you're the closest to the strongly disagree. So what about that statement puts you there?
It depends, it depends on the meaning of we. We as a body certainly can't, because we can't deal with what's in every individual's heart. And so, you know, our, our jurisdiction stops at the, you know, at the, at the, at the law books, so to speak, so I think we can work to end racial inequity, and we can be very sincere in that effort. And, you know, hopefully, just by making people aware that that will play a, a big role in it, but I don't think we'll ever end it, just because some people refuse to recognize that there is such a thing.
Well, and I appreciate you acknowledging, right, that the statement is intentional about, I believe we, like, who is the we? Right, if you define the we, and that's a definitely something that many people react to in the statement. And then what does it mean to end it, right? As we think about ending, as you're also kind of processing, can we actually end whatever it is that you're defining as ending? And that can be, can be very hard if we think about whatever that end is that you're talking about or thinking about. So I really appreciate you naming that, both of those points. It looks like Matt and Michael are in neutral, is that right? So you guys are in a neutral space? You guys want to say, what about that statement puts you there?
Matt, I'll let you go first. Or I'll go first, whatever you like.
It looks like he's trying to unmute himself.
You know, I, I, I think, you know, I agree with where, where Mary Ann was saying. I mean, are we, are we talking about ourselves as a business? Are we talking about ourselves as a city, as a nation? You know, the definition of we is important, but also, I, I think the interpretation of what racial inequity means, right? And, you know, I, I'd say it's neutral, because I think we're, we're gonna be hard-pressed to solve everyone's issues and everyone's problems and everyone's perspectives, right? And it's all gonna be on, on a, on a spectrum. And, you know, it, bringing everybody on to that same page, calibrating everyone, having a shared understanding and, and shared goals and objectives, you know. I mean, that's part of why we're here, right? We needed to calibrate ourselves as to what we as a city wanted to, to accomplish in this dialogue. So do I believe that, that we should end racial inequity? If it were phrased that way, then, then absolutely strongly agree. How do we get there? And, and, you know, how do we, how do we, you know, achieve, you know, one hundred percent? I, you know, I'm, I don't know. That's, that's the big challenge in front of us.
Yeah. Thank you for naming that. And Michael, you had a, you want to reflect as well, what puts you in, in neutral?
Yeah, yeah. You know, you can't create rules or legislation to try to create racial equity. In fact, when you do, I think you cause a lot of resentment. Because people don't know what it means, and everybody has a different interpretation. And, and that's, and when I say everybody, I mean everybody, all races, all cultures, people tend to feel maybe they're being left out. People might tend to feel that maybe one is being favored more than the other. There's a lot of unpacking that needs to be done on, on that topic. I think honestly, it's all rooted in love if you really want to change things. And I'm not just talking about the word, I'm talking about the realness of it. And what I mean by that is, is, is when it comes to love, everybody's got to lay down their weapons. Everybody's got to lay down their defenses. That's a very difficult do, thing to do, because so much of that is innate. Not necessarily taught, just innate. People, people have natural defenses, and as they go through their lives, they form prejudices. Not all prejudices, in my opinion, are wrong. We form prejudices based on our life experiences. And those prejudices tend to form to keep us safe. At least I'm speaking from my own, from my own experience. And I will avoid things that trigger my prejudice, because I want to stay safe. So, also coming into that is there's various causes of racial inequity. And when you start to unpack that, it gets really squirrely, because then you get into the issue of accountability. Is something truly identified as being unequal? Or does it land in an area where somebody could have overcome what they might have perceived as an inequity, and, but they just didn't do it. You know, could have went to college, but they didn't. Could have took the job, but they didn't. You know, a, a, a series of choices, if you will, which, in that sense, we all start from the same place when it comes to making choices. Then lastly, the topic affects people differently. The definition of that, I, I heard it said by one of my colleagues. And then my last thing is why I think it's going to be very impossible, but we can make great strides. Is this my personal opinion, is man has, mankind in general has an inherency to do bad things. And it's a constant struggle for mankind to move from bad things to good things. Very difficult. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you for your thoughtfulness in, in all the points that you've made. And I, I have to say, listening to that, it felt like you, you were leaning more in the disagree, not on the neutral side. So I almost felt like you could have been left of Mary Ann. And, but, but somehow you found yourself to neutral, right? I'm glad you were reflecting on that.
You, you know why is, thank you for, for, for pointing that out, is because I, I won't give up the battle. That is the battle. And it's not just with racial, it's not just racial. The battle is against, I guess, inherent badness. I hate inequity, I hate bullies, and I hate unfairness. And racial inequity falls in there. It's a struggle. And until everybody lays down their weapons and lays down their defenses, you, you said that. But all of us said that months ago when we created this panel, that we need to be able to speak from a safe place. If, if what I say here, I'm gonna read on Facebook, and I'm gonna get people telling me that I'm prejudiced, and I hate, and I don't understand, and all these other things, I'll just pack up my suitcase and not participate in this topic. That's the, and that's not just me, I'm speaking broadly. That's how, that's how vast many people on all sides are gonna think. So, I will never give up the fight. I don't know if we'll ever achieve it a hundred percent.
No, thank you for naming that. I'm glad you also just acknowledged what brought, what brought you to neutral, even as you were naming the challenges. So thanks for naming that. And Zach, you are, you were almost at the line of strongly agrees. I'd love to hear kind of what, what, what brought you there.
Yeah, well, it's just my eternal optimism, honestly, is, is what, what brought me to that side and you know, and I think when you look at the we and, and what, how you define it, and, you know, I think we in this room and this space can certainly end it. As a community, I'm hopeful that we can. You know, certainly acknowledge the, the comments made by my colleagues and sort of understand, you know, the just the, how tough this fight is gonna be. You know, I, I do think in the end, you know, we all sort of work in our own space and, and I come to this table and, and whether it's the dinner table with my family, or whether it's this table here with, with my colleagues, and ultimately the community with sort of that task at hand, and like, I believe we can do this, right? I believe that there are things that we can do to end this. Now, you know, also being realistic, I understand the, the, just the inherent challenges of just sort of bringing everyone to the table and, and making people see things that maybe they don't want to see, or trying to understand everybody's perspective, but at the end of the day, for me, you know, I'm optimistic, I'm, I'm hopeful for our future that, that we can end it. And, and oftentimes, that does include enacting laws to prevent redlining communities and things like, we create laws to end, you know, racial inequity. And so that's all part of it. I'm just hopeful. And I, and I'll be, I'll be the optimist today on this one, so.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm the Mary Poppins, remember?
You are, you are.
Well, I appreciate you, Zach, and I appreciate everyone in their reflections. I think that word that Zach used is is the word that we use as we, when we ask this statement. The people that are usually standing on that strongly agree side, the word that we tend to hear more consistently is I'm here because I'm feeling more hopeful. Right? I'm just feeling more hopeful right now. And, and, and also the people that are usually standing maybe, and not many of you weren't really in that strongly disagree, but you're, as you were naming some things that put you maybe not closer to the hopeful space, a lot of the things that you're articulating is what we refer to as just being pragmatic. Right? It's like, I'm just acknowledging reality and the challenges of humanity, challenges of our history, and, you know, and, and I'm just as I'm being pragmatic, I just, it just seems so hard, and, you know, and, and that's the way I'm feeling right now. And it's really important, particularly as we lean more into this time together, and as you continue to do this work as a city, to know that on any given day, you could fall anywhere on that line, depending on how you feel. Right? It's just important to acknowledge that it's part of our humanity, right? If you think about, you know, we're obviously in election season right now, and if you think about where people were, and not even knowing your politics, but how people felt after the election of President Obama in two thousand and eight, people started to feel more hopeful about race and race relations. It was like, man, what do we, we must have, we accomplished something as a, as a country. There were a lot of people, if you were asking people this exercise, they were like, I'm feeling pretty hopeful that we may be able to end this. Even if you were Democrat or Republican, you just were feeling hopeful. Right? And that has changed in the last four years, right?
I was in Washington when he was, during that inauguration, and I had never felt that same vibe in Washington before.
Yeah, right? And so just acknowledging that, right? Just acknowledging, on any given day, we could be there. But the, and, and so what I the reason why we ask this statement all the time is, how do you make your, if you're gonna do this work as a city, and you know, on any given day, you might be feeling pragmatic and not feeling very hopeful, how do you make your way back to that hopeful space? Right? Because how do you find your way back to that hopeful, and that's, otherwise, why are you doing the work? Right? You gotta find your way back to that hopeful space to be able to, be able to keep on fighting, keep on doing the work, knowing that on any given day, you may not be feeling that way. You may be feeling some other kind of way about that. And so I just, in, in naming that, and I think I appreciated a couple of you acknowledging some of our history about what can we do, right? The, the words, intentionally, what can we do, what can, I believe we can end it? How do you define what that we is, right? If you're talking about, you know, as a country, if you're talking about things that are outside of your good control, it might start to feel a little overwhelming. But as you start to define the we, that might, that might make you feel a little more hopeful about, this is what we can do together. And what is it that we are trying to do, right? What is it that we can do as, as we're trying to end racial inequity? You might be thinking about re, ending racial inequity as it relates to opportunity. Right? Can you control the opportunities as we're trying to end racial inequity as it relates to opportunity, or conditions? Racial inequity in terms of people's conditions, right? So you could be, you, you may not ultimately be able to end racial inequity in outcomes, right? Because there might be other variables that are out of your control, and, you know, it's harder to control the outcomes, but what can you do? And that's where I think about our, some of our, our country's history. And I think about my own personal life, as I think about my mom, forty-five years ago. As I tell, I've told, I tell this story all the time, but forty-five years ago, my mom was an avid smoker. And forty-five years ago, it was legal, and she was doing this, sharing a cigarette with my doctor in the hospital, talking about my health. Like, that was our policy. We had designed that as a country. That's where we were forty-five years ago. Think about how far what we've done to change policy to really address issues related to tobacco use, right? And how, what we've done to really end some of those, those challenges. And I also, just in that same thing, remember my mom, she could be, she was driving me to the doctor, holding me in her hand, smoking her cigarette, putting on makeup, and all of that was legal forty-five years ago. Right? And think about what we've done to change policies and right? Where you have to be a certain age for the seatbelt, for the car seat to be one-way, and then you gotta change your car seat the other way. Like, we've done a lot to change policies. And, you know, by no means am I suggesting those are the same as ending racial inequity, right? I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just also just naming that there's work we can do to kind of help us find a way to be hopeful. And so it's in that space, it's like, how do I, as you lean into this conversation today, and as you guys as a city continue to do the work, how are you making, how are you finding your way back to that hopeful space, as you think about what is it that we can do to try to end it? And that is part why we, why we, why we name it in this space. And, 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 and the, the last story I want to tell on this, that, that I think captures it so well, is when we did our first training six years ago. Remember doing this activity when we all were in person, and, and we were standing in a room, and one of the council members was from Troy, Alabama. We had, it was at our conference in DC in March. And one of the council members was standing all the way on the strongly disagree side. Her name was Councilwoman Troy Henderson. I mean, Councilmember Geraldine Henderson from Troy, Alabama. And so she was from Troy, Alabama. She was a sixty-five-year-old black woman. And so she was sharing why she strongly disagreed with the statement, as she talked about her own personal story, about growing up in Troy, seeing lynching, seeing these whites only, and all the hatred that she's seen. And this doesn't feel like we could ever get there, and it was very powerful and very sombering to hear. But then I worked my way all the way down where Zach was, and, and the person standing there was a guy named Benjamin Palladino. Benjamin was sixteen years old at the time. He was a white teenager, white male teenager. He was one of our youth delegates attending the conference. And Benjamin went on to share why he was standing on the strongly agree side. He's like, look, I'm, I go to predominantly all-boys, predominantly white Jesuit school in Little Rock. And here's what I've been doing for the last few years, and why I think we can end it. I think white people need to be I think white people need to be know how to talk to other white people about race and I'm creating spaces where we need to be doing that. We need to step up and I'm committed to this. And, and so he went on and kind of really very passionate sharing his, where his space where he's at. And typically what we do when we do it in person, we, we ask people, based upon what you've heard from your colleagues, feel free to move along the line if, if you change your mind based upon what someone else has said. You know, just to kind of, for people to see where you are. And that was the first time where I saw in the room where Councilmember DeJerrilyn literally walked all the way across the room. She gave Benjamin a hug and she said, yeah, I believe we can get there, right? And that was like, oh, that's the work. That's the work. Like, how do I find my way back to where Benjamin is on any given day? She was feeling some kind of way that, that time, but she found her way back to that hopeful space. And that's the space that, you know, as we lean into the conversation, even if you might be feeling some kind of way, how do you find your way back to the hopeful space as you lean into the work? So I hope that's helpful as you guys are sitting with this as we go a little bit further. And appreciate you guys, um, really opening up and sharing. I really appreciate the modeling.
Yeah, and I just wanted, that's what I wanted to add, uh, Leon, that uh, the city of Temecula is so um, lucky to have such leaders who are willing to be vulnerable and lean in like you are uh, in this uh, conversation. Um, that doesn't al- always happen and so I really appreciate uh, just your honesty and um, leaning into this conversation. It's really, it's great to see and hear, thank you.
Yeah. All right, and we're, and we don't say that to every council, every council we go to and do it again, just, uh, just for the record. All right, so um.
People openly say that we love one another and we really do. I mean, we've known each other for many years, you know, Mike and I have known for thirty years. Aaron, I've known since he was an intern and so, you know, we know that we all have proclivities and we work around those, you know? Um, and I think we're good for each other. I think we hold each other accountable in a loving kind of way.
Right, right. Well, this is the framework um, that really centers our training, right? We're, and we're gonna lean into that today. Um, we wanted to start off with you modeling, getting you comfortable talking. Clearly you guys are really leaning into that already. But we're gonna spend time, um, with the time we have around normalizing, a lot of time normalizing um, and creating spaces of understanding that shared history and analysis. Uh, and then we're gonna spend a little bit of time around operationalizing. What is a tool that you can use? How do you understand data as you center it? Um, and how do you start organizing? What does it look like? You know, you have the ready, that your ready commission, like, how do you build off that ready commission as you think about the work that needs to happen? And how, what are other cities doing? So we're gonna just kind of give you a very high level towards the end of some of that. But we want to lean in first to the racial, uh, the normalizing. Our first one is just really giving a more context of understanding history. Um, and as we talk about history, you know, the first part, this is, this is intended to be um, very high level of understanding. How is a country, we have espoused values that seem wonderful and lofty and moral and, and good, uh, but they haven't always aligned with reality. And I wanna put up a couple to see, uh, to just to kind of name that, uh, that might be something that's intuitive to you, but not always to everyone. And so this first one, all men are created equal. Where do we find that in a, a value statement that showed up in our country? What document was that in? Any, any guesses?
Yeah, the, the.
Declaration of.
Declaration of Independence.
That's right, the Declaration of Independence. And so what year was that written in?
Seventeen seventy-six.
Seventeen seventy-six, so a long time ago in seventeen seventy-six. And so when Thomas, Thomas Jefferson wrote, that wrote all men, uh, the Declaration of Independence, what were some of the realities that you could think of that was going on in seventeen seventy-six when we said all men are created equal? What was not the reality uh, to that statement?
Well, we know slavery, that's obvious. And, and, and that's the obvious one, but inequality ran in many ways, not just with slavery and of course around the world, um, in so many ways. But if you just wanna focus on the US, how do you define equal? Socio-economically unequal, racially unequal, um, I mean, back in that time, if you didn't own property, you didn't get to vote. Was that unequal?
Unless you're a woman and you didn't get to vote either.
Uh, that, that's true too. And so there were lots of inequalities. Of course, I think at the time, the most heinous was slavery. And of course, you go to the Dred Scott decision, which was, you know, uh, uh, was absolutely crazy. Um, and that sort of pointed out the stark inequity as it related to the black race.
Yep. So I, so you named, you, you named just about all of the, 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 uh, the realities, right? So when they, when they were naming all men are created equal, they weren't talking about all men. They were talking about white men who owned property, so it wasn't talking about all white men at the time. So that point about being created equal, it wasn't equal even for all white men, right? As they're talking about all white men who own property are equal, right? Is that, is what they meant? And as Mary Ann was saying, they also weren't talking about women, right? And uh, women.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you.
Go ahead.
Because you're, you're, you're insinuating a thought. Um, just because they declared all men are created equal, i- is the idea that they were going to sweep their arm and, and snap their fingers and all of a sudden everything was going to change? That was a lofty, a holy goal to achieve. And obviously, the world had not achieved it. And since then, it, it appears, I can't speak for the entire country, but I think it's safe to say we've been trying to go in that direction. We may, I mean, even the, even what you brought up in the last exercise speaks to that. Even what we're doing here today speaks to that. So I think they laid down a criteria, not a statement. I think they laid down an idea, something to aspire to, not a statement that was inherently wrong. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going a little long, but I just, you, you mentioned definitions and I wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, no, so I, I appreciate those thoughts, uh, Michael. And, and so just to uh, be clear, as we are talking about values versus reality, I think you're saying the same thing to the point of what, of what we are trying to highlight here. As we talk about values, these were values that were espoused in our declaration, all men are created equal. And I think you were also just acknowledging that wasn't the reality at the time. They wasn't all men, were, all men weren't created equal at the time. All, and it, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't include uh, um, what, uh, those that weren't equal at the time were some white men who didn't own property. It were black, any black men because they were considered three-fifths of a property at the time and it would, didn't include any women. So the reality wasn't aligned with the value, right? And I think that's, that's how I hear you're reflecting back and that's the, that's part of, that's part of the point, right? As we think about wonderful values that we've put out, the values haven't always aligned with the reality at the time. Does that make sense?
Yes and no. Um, a- a- and I, and I, but I think we might be saying the same thing. If at that moment, they made that declaration, okay, um, obviously, what you just said is true. Um, and it seems like a great hypocrisy and you can find many examples of that. But, but if they were making the declaration and said, this is where we need to move, then it was a great virtue. But I would agree with you that at the time the statement was made, those things were not in effect, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
When think about the, the inequities, I think that when they thought about men, they thought about their equals or their peers, men who own property. And I think it wasn't even, you know, it was like a natural kind of thing. Um, I don't think that they considered any, anything else to be quote-unquote, normal or fair or natural. I just, but I think it, you know, just like we, we used to think smoking was okay, you know? I think they thought that was okay at the time, obviously, and because slavery remained in play for hundreds of years. So I think they didn't even have any consideration of that, you know, that it should be anything else at the time.
Zach, where are you leaning in to make a point? I'm looking at body language, looks like you're trying to come up with a reflection.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, to, to Mike's point a little bit, I mean, this is a declaration, right? Like, it's in the Declaration of Independence, so they're declaring, you know, all men are created equal, but the reality is just, that's just not true. That's, yeah.
Yeah. Let, let's try, let's try a second one, see how, how you guys react to this one. Um, this is with liberty and justice for all. Where, where do we see that? Where does that show up in about, another value that we've espoused? You know, where, where do we see that, a value espoused?
On our.
Pledge of allegiance, that's right. And so definitely it's in our pledge of allegiance. And so when we put this in our value pledge of allegiance, for those that remember, you know, you should say it every day in school. Uh, do y'all know when was officially adopted by our government, the pledge of allegiance?
Fifty-three, something like that.
Not, it's actually nineteen forty-two.
What was it was? What was it?
It was, it was originally written in eighteen ninety-two, right?
It was, it was.
But I don't think they adopted it until much later.
That's correct.
Under God came into play about that time, Mike, fifty-three.
Got it, got it. So Matt, Matt is correct, it was originally created in the eighteen nineties and it was officially adopted by uh, our government in nineteen forty-two. Um, so that's when our government officially adopted it as a pledge. Um, and so here's another value statement, right? Just acknowledging a wonderful value statement with liberty and justice for all, right? So again, as we, as a government adopting that, what, uh, you know, as you think about that as a value statement in nineteen forty-two with liberty and justice for all, um, did that align, did that align with the reality of what was happening in our country in nineteen forty-two?
No, no. Civil rights weren't even a, you know, a, a thought at the time. Um, and then justice, justice, even to, even today, justice is only as good as the, as whoever's, you know, adjudicating. And it's not always fair and it's not fair even in, um, from using the same judge, uh, you know, um, trying people that have done the same crime. And you, you typically, you don't always see the same result. So there's a lot of um, interpretation all along in, in, in that statement.
Yeah, so I think you named a lot of really good points there, Mary Ann, which is in nineteen forty-two, uh, Brown versus the Board, Board of Education hadn't passed yet, that was in nineteen fifty-five, the Civil Rights Act. That Mary Ann mentioned was nineteen sixty-four and nineteen sixty-five was the Voting Rights Act. And even as you fast forward and look to today, as you think about justice, is there justice for all? Even as we talk about the desire to have a value with liberty and justice for all, it doesn't ma- may not necessarily reflect the reality consistently as we look at justice, right? And what justice is, so.
Right.
That, so I appreciate you naming all of that, that's great. And so, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it's interesting because I think the original pledge of allegiance actually made reference to my flag, not the flag. So the liberty and justice for all, you know, started off with a statement of, of my flag, like this is ours, right? Um, and, and eventually, you know, it became, you know, the flag. And so there was this connotation, I think, that part of the rationale and the change in language was it wanted to become more inclusive, that it wasn't just you as an individual or your thoughts and beliefs, but a country instead.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
So.
Uh, let's try, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna add, um, is, it, it, was there liberty? No. Is there justice for all? No, not even today. There's not justice for all. Um, justice comes to ten, uh, it, it, justice tends to lean toward those who can afford to pay for it. Um, and that's a sad, that's a sad thing. We aspire even today for liberty and justice for all. And you can make the argument that even though it's uh, even though it doesn't work well and sometimes it works very lousy, around the world, it's still probably the best system. But no, we, we have not accomplished liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Um, let's do one more, see how you guys do. This is government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth. Where have we seen that? Wonderful statement.
Lincoln, Gettysburg Address.
You got it, yeah. And what year was the Gettysburg Address?
Ooh, it was in the midst of uh, the Civil War, I, I, eight, eighteen forty. I don't know, can't say.
So you were eighteen, uh, eighteen sixty-three.
Okay, there you go.
Sixty-three. Um, so I got, and then, and wonderful, in the Gettysburg Address, government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth. Again, another value that we put out as a country. Um, and even as we think about the reality, do, you know, as we think about, do we have government of the people, for the people um, and by the people that shall not perish? And what's the reality as we think about how people see government? From all the surveys that we know, uh, how, people, uh, there's definitely segments of our population that has limited trust of government, right? Is, or even um, how government has treated them over the years, right? And so just acknowledging, again, wonderful values as a country, but the reality didn't always line up, right? As we talk about our reality, reality for so many in our country. Um, and if we wanted to start there, just to kind of name, because there's so much history. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Ann. Were you trying to say something? Mary Ann?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
No, I'm sorry.
I had to take a call from my, my, my other boss.
No, no worries. I thought you were jumping in, no worries, no worries at all.
Oh, go ahead. No, I was jumping back in, actually.
Got it, got it. So we want, we wanted to start here, um, because, um, you know, there's so much we could do and if we had more time to really normalize this, but this is a very high level of understanding and how we think about and talk about um, our history. And there's so much that's not taught in our schools, a lot that we don't know. Um, but we, what we wanna do now with the time with this, um, we wanna go a little bit deeper with you in the space that we have. Um, so we're gonna do, what we're gonna do is play, have a video and discussion space with us. We're gonna, this is a three-part, a, a three-part series that was done by PBS several years ago called um, uh, called Race, Race, The Power of Illusion. And part three of that, of, of that series is called The House We Live In. Um, and we wanna play, it really breaks down and understands some of that history as we understand race and understand the implications of race, um, as we look at, um, you know, as we look at policy. So we wanna play the first part and then come back, it's about twenty minutes and then we'll have about a discussion with you and then we'll play the second part and have a discussion, all right? So I'll tee that up and um, and get it going.
Major funding for this program provided by the Ford Foundation, a resource for innovative people and institutions worldwide. And the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. Additional funding provided by these funders. It is all around us. It is an illusion and yet profoundly real. What we perceive as race is one of the first things we notice about each other. Skin, darker or lighter. Eyes, round or almond. Blue, black, brown. Hair, curly, straight, blonde, or dark. And attached to these characteristics is a mosaic of values, assumptions, and historical meanings. Even those of us who claim we don't believe the stereotypes can easily recite them.
The average person on the street thinks that race consists of differences in physical appearance. They also think that from looking at a person's physical appearance, that they can find out or know more subtle things about them. Race is not a level of biological division that we find in anatomically modern humans. There are no subspecies in the human beings that live today.
And that's quite shocking to a lot of individuals. When you look and you think you see race, to be told that no, you don't see race, you just think you see race. That, you know, it's based on your cultural lens, that's extremely challenging.
Just because race isn't a biological reality, doesn't mean it isn't real. Being classified as Asian or black or Latino has never carried the same advantages in our society as being white.
Race in itself means nothing. The markers of race, skin color, hair texture, the things that we identify as the racial markers mean nothing unless they are given social meaning and unless there's public policy and private actions that act upon those kinds of characteristics. That creates race.
Physical differences don't make race. What makes race are the laws and practices that affect life chances and opportunities based on those differences. based on those differences. If we look carefully, we can see how our institutions and policies have assigned racial identities and reinforced racial inequality throughout the 20th century.
And this is something I think that all immigrant groups experience in one way or another when they come to America, no matter what point in time it is, because they come to a country that has historically always been highly racialized. It's a country where race has its origins in slavery, as well as in the conquest of Native American Indians. So anybody coming from the outside after that point has to fit into this racialized society in some way. And it's not always clear how people are gonna fit in right away.
At the start of the 20th century, as millions of immigrants arrived from all over the world, lawmakers and social scientists debated how all of them, including the new European arrivals, would fit into the hierarchy of races already here. They came seeking economic opportunity, freedom, and a future for their families. Of the 23 million newcomers between 1880 and 1920, the vast majority were from Eastern and Southern Europe. Immigrants often work the hardest, poorest-paying, and most dangerous jobs, along with the so-called inferior races already here: blacks, Mexicans, and Chinese.
Cities with enormous slums developed as the ugly side of industrialization. Ugly both in terms of the aesthetic of American cities, but also ugly in terms of the, the solidifying of class differences and class tension. As all of those things became apparent, uh, the immigrant became the symbol for, for what America might be becoming.
By 1910, 58% of American mining and factory workers were immigrants. Like Mexicans and African Americans, Italians, Slavs, and Jews were often desired as laborers, but also feared, seen as promiscuous, lazy, or stupid. Some saw it as a racial invasion. Charles Davenport, a famous biologist, expressed those fears in 1911. "The population of the United States," wrote Davenport, "will, on account of the great influx of blood from southeastern Europe, rapidly become darker in pigment, smaller in stature, more given to crimes of larceny, kidnapping, assault, murder, rape, and sexual immorality. And the ratio of insanity in the population will rapidly increase."
And this was also a time when scientific race theory began to take off. And people began to, uh, look at society and look at, at groups of people in more racialized terms. So people were perceived as, as being separate races. So you had kind of a higher order of white races, you know, which were seen as the Nordics as opposed to what many of the nativeists called the lower races of Europe.
There are various groups like the American Breeders Association, the Eugenics Research Association, who not only are doing research on various racial types, in this case Hebrews, Slavs, Mediterranean's. What we would call now the Caucasian race, uh, would break it down to thirty-five, or thirty-seven, or forty-five races for study. And a lot of the language was beginning to get at the idea that those differences were actually rooted in, in reproduction. They were rooted in inheritable traits. They were heritable, they were biological, they were immutable.
The more the newcomers were forced into low-paying jobs and diseased tenements, the more these conditions were explained as natural consequences of their innate racial character. Biology was destiny. Which side of the racial divide you found yourself on could be a matter of life or death. Between 1890 and 1920, 2,500 African Americans were lynched in the South. In 1915, Leo Frank, a Jew living in Atlanta, was pulled from jail and hanged by a mob for allegedly killing a white girl. Writing about the lynching, a black journalist wondered, is the Jew a white man?
Some historians have suggested that these new immigrant groups from Europe were in-between peoples. They were in a transitional stage. When compared to Anglo-Saxon Protestants, groups such as Italians, um, or Jews, were seen as not being fully white, perhaps. But when compared to African Americans, or when compared to Asians, um, their whiteness became more salient, became more visible.
Could European ethnics become fully white and thus fully American? By 1910, a new term was entering popular culture to describe the transformation of Europeans. The phrase came from the title of a Broadway play by Israel Zangwill. God said Zangwill would melt down the races of Europe into a single pure essence, out of which he would mold Americans.
So when the Irish, when Germans, when Italians were coming and they didn't speak the language, didn't know the culture, the idea was they will assimilate into Americanhood. They will become American, which in the American tradition has meant white American. But that melting pot never included people of color. Blacks, Chinese, Puerto Ricans, et cetera, could not melt into the pot. They could be used as wood to produce the fire for the pot, but they could not be used as material to be melted into the pot.
Whiteness was key to citizenship. In 1790, Congress had passed an act declaring that only free, white immigrants could become naturalized citizens. After the Civil War, naturalization was extended to persons of African descent as well. But it was the white citizen who had clear access to the vote, sat on juries, was elected to public office, and had better jobs. Whiteness was not simply a matter of skin color. To be white was to gain the full rewards of American citizenship.
In order to be a naturalized citizen in this country, you had to be categorized as white or black. And almost everybody who tried to naturalize, all but I think one case that went to Supreme Court, all of them were people trying to be categorized as white. So the court had to make decisions about who was white and who was not.
Courts and legislators had long been in the business of conferring racial identities in the South to enforce Jim Crow segregation and laws against mixed marriages. Courts had to first determine who was black under law.
And here's where it really gets interesting. You've got some places, for example, Virginia. Virginia law defined a black person as a person with one-sixteenth African ancestry. Now Florida defined a black person as a person with one-eighth African ancestry. Now Alabama said, you're black if you got any black ancestry, any African ancestry at all. But you know what this means? You can walk across a state line and literally legally change race. Now what does race mean under those circumstances? You give me the power, I can make you any race I want you to be because it is a social-political
In 1909, American courts had that power. That year, the U.S. Court of Appeals in Massachusetts ruled that Armenians, often classified as Asiatic Turks, were legally white. If Armenians could be designated white, what of the other so-called Asiatic races? Filipinos, Syrians, the Japanese? Could they also petition successfully to be designated white by the courts and thus In 1922, when Japanese businessman Takawa Ozawa petitioned the Supreme Court for naturalization, many in the Japanese community believed his was the perfect test case.
Takawa Ozawa came from Japan, went to the University of California at Berkeley for a few years, then moved to Hawaii where he had, um, a family. And he applied to become a naturalized citizen in 1915.
My father wrote his own brief and everything, and he was really devoted. He wanted to become an American citizen. And nothing would stop him. He was determined.
Japanese growers in California watched Ozawa's case closely. By 1920, a series of alien land acts prohibited many non-citizens from owning or leasing land. Without a legal designation of whiteness to make them citizens, Japanese immigrants could not have the full protection of American law, no matter how long they lived in the In his brief, Ozawa argued that his skin was as white as any so-called Caucasian, if not whiter. But he made a much more important second argument.
But his second argument was that race shouldn't matter for citizenship. What really mattered was a person's beliefs.
My honesty and industriousness are well-known among my Japanese and American friends. In name, Benedict Arnold was an American, but at heart, he was a traitor. In name, I am not an American, but at heart, I am a true American.
The articles would come out in the paper. I thought, ooh, what did he do? You know? I thought only bad things came out in the paper and I was kind of ashamed, you know, when I was a child. And it was just the way we were brought up. I didn't have any Oriental friends. My neighbors were all Caucasian. And so he was so determined to get us well when the time came to be American citizens.
The Supreme Court ruled that Ozawa could not be a citizen. Uh, they said he was not white within the meaning of the statute and therefore not eligible to citizenship. And the court said, well, he's not white because he's not Caucasian and Caucasians are whites. He did everything right. He learned English. He had a lifestyle that was American. He went to Christian church on Sunday. He dressed as a Westerner. He brought up his children, um, as Americans. He did everything he was supposed to do. And, and yet he's told that he can't be a citizen because he's not white.
The court ruled that according to the best-known science, Ozawa was not Caucasian, but of the Mongolian race. But the court would not be bound by science in policing the boundaries of whiteness. Only three months after Ozawa, the court took up the case of Bhagat Sen Thind, a South Asian immigrant and U.S. Army veteran who petitioned for citizenship on the grounds that Indians were of the Aryan or Caucasian race and therefore white.
And he makes the scientific argument, um, having learned something actually from the Ozawa case, that he is Caucasian. He gets scientific authority to speak on his behalf, that in fact, South Asians are included in the Caucasian race.
So here the court was in a bind because they were presented with so-called scientific evidence that Indians were Caucasian. And the court solved this problem by saying that it didn't matter what science said, so-called science. They actually said white is not something that can be scientifically determined, but white is something that is subjectively understood by who they called the common person, the common man.
It may be true, reasoned the court, that the blond Scandinavian and the brown Hindu have a common ancestor in the dim reaches of antiquity, but the average man knows perfectly well that there are unmistakable and profound differences between them today. The same court that used science to determine whiteness in Ozawa three months before, now refuted its own reasoning in Thind. Thind might well be Caucasian, the High Court said, but he was not white. The justices never said what whiteness was, only what it wasn't. Their implied logic was a circular one. Whiteness was what the common white man said it was.
The court often decided who was white and who wasn't based on whether they just felt that the person would politically fit well into the kind of society that we were trying to build. And sometimes it was pretty explicit that this is what the court was doing.
There was widespread racial views that Asians were undesirable, that they threatened to contaminate the American society. Basically that Asians are too different, that they can't ever really become like the rest of us.
The consequences of the unanimous verdict in U.S. versus Thind were catastrophic for the Indian community. South Asians who had naturalized before the verdict were stripped of their citizenship and property. Vasno Das Begai was a successful merchant who fled British tyranny in India to raise his family in a free country. After his American citizenship was revoked, he took his own life. He left a suicide note for his family and another for the public. But now they come and say to me, I am no longer an American citizen. What have I made of myself and my children? We cannot exercise our rights, we cannot leave this country. Humility and insults, blockades this way, and bridges burned behind. For the Japanese community, the verdicts in the Ozawa and Thind cases were equally Now, as aliens ineligible for citizenship, many growers were unable to purchase or even lease land to stay in business. Thousands of acres were seized from Japanese immigrants and sold to white farmers. By the time the racial requirement for naturalization was finally removed in 1952, Takawa Ozawa was long dead.
The notion that Asians are racially unassimilable and that they're ineligible to citizenship because of their race is something that I think has had a real enduring effect. The fact that they were seen as non-American enabled many Americans to see them as, as the enemy and to strip them totally of their civil liberties and to put them in internment camps during World War II. The legacy of this idea is that, um, even those who are third or fourth-generation Asian Americans are still perceived as foreigners.
In 1924... In 1924, Congress passed the Johnson-Reed Immigration Act, which effectively banned Asian immigration until 1965. Johnson-Reed also cut immigration from Eastern and Southern Europe to a trickle.
Your blood's the same as mine. Mine's the same as his. Do you know what this wonderful country is made up? It's made up-
World War II found the US at war with Nazi Germany and Japan. Films like the 1945 Oscar-winning short, "The House I Live In," called for national unity and ethnic tolerance.
And these other distinctions, which had carried so much power in an earlier period, the Celts, Slavs, Anglo-Saxon, started to fade away. There was, they had no purchase because those distinctions didn't seem to hold the key to any social questions that were worth answering anymore. The more important and more pressing political, social questions seemed to hinge on black
Sinatra's song was one of tolerance, but the line that sang of "my neighbors, black and white" was cut from the film.
So long, men.
European immigrants were learning that whiteness was more than skin color. It was the privilege of opportunity and above all, exclusive.
There's this whole very standard narrative of the European mobility model. We came here with nothing. We worked hard. We pulled ourselves up by our bootstraps, and it's offered up as proof of the openness of the American economic order.
Left out of the bootstrap myth of European ethnics was access to opportunities close to non-whites. Roosevelt's New Deal reforms offered many Americans a path out of poverty.
This social security measure gives at least some protection to 50 millions of our citizens.
But the original social security program excluded farmworkers and domestics, most of whom were non-white. And many unions locked blacks and Mexicans into low-paying jobs or kept them out altogether. But perhaps the best example of how European ethnics would finally gain the full benefits of whiteness came with an innovation in housing at the end of World War II.
All right. Come on back. So, know that that's a lot of information to take in, a lot of information, obviously, that many of us would not have, would not taught it before, so just wanted to acknowledge that as you are sitting with it, and this might be the first time you're hearing it, and just want you to do a little self-care. If you want to just kind of take a deep breath in. I don't see y'all taking a deep breath in. Deep breath in and let it out. Take another deep breath in and let it out. All right. All right, Gloria, I'm gonna turn it over to you. You're gonna facilitate this.
Thank you, Leon. Yeah, I, Marianne, I saw your face and I, during, throughout watching this, and it was-
It just frustrates me.
Yeah, very similar to how I felt when I first watched it.
And I watch things like this all the time, you know, because I'm interested in it, frustrates me. I can't believe how people can be so dumb, but okay.
Yeah, it's really hard, and I, we show the, this video because really, it's part of really being able to normalize these conversations. We have to understand the history, and although it's hard, it really does center us so that we can have these conversations moving forward. So it is a really strong part in normalizing our conversations, and this, these, the more you understand our history, and like Leon says, you know, it wasn't taught in our schools, you know, and, and so it really does help sort of frame this as you move forward in this work. And so, you know, we just wanted to just really talk about some questions and guiding questions to help us with the conversation, and so I think, Leon, you know, we don't have to bring it up. If you want, we can, I can read them off and, and then we can have the conversation. I think that would be better.
Yeah. You know, so- Can I interrupt a quick second? Because my video feed is not working. I keep trying to turn it on, and it won't let me, and the message I get is, oh, there it is. Thank you, guys. Hold on. Back. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted you to look me in the eye.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. I'm glad you're back. We'd like to see you.
Thank you.
So, you know, I think what, how did, you know, and really reflecting on what we just saw, how did the US government define whiteness during the historical period? And how do you define what it means to be white today?
I don't think, I don't think about it. I don't think about the fact that I'm white. Maybe that says something in itself, but, and clearly, it was defined, you know, by your appearance more than anything, because then they lined people up and they judged them based on how white they were. I mean, it wasn't just enough to be white or black. Then, you know, then you're judged by degree, I guess, of, of, you know, how light you are, how dark. I did notice one thing that struck me in that narration, when she was talking about, you know, the, the, I guess they said there were four classes of people or whatever, and it was Asian, I don't know, African-American or, or black, and then, and she said Mexican. Now, we're so used to saying Hispanic. It, I caught that. She actually said Mexican. So I just wonder if they, if they thought of, you know, people from Spain differently than they thought of people from Mexico. Obviously, they did. So I don't think about the fact that I'm white. I am concerned about other people not feeling inferior because of their color. I want everyone to feel, you know, good about themselves and all that, so I, you know, I don't think about it. And I think we know all of this, you know, like this history, and there were nuances of it that, you know, like I said, about the Mexican versus the Spaniard, but it just frustrates me that people could lose so much culture and miss out on so many opportunities to, you know, expand their horizons and get to know people and enjoy other cultures and things like that. Just, it frustrates me that people can think of anyone as being inferior for something as simple as the color of their skin.
Yeah. Thank you, Marianne. Anybody else wanna?
No. I- Quick question. Ask your question one more time.
Sure. How did the US government define whiteness during this, the historical period in the video you just watched? And how do you, has that changed? How do you define it, being white today?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on how they did, how they defined it back then in the beginning, because I think the video covered that, and I think we all see the same thing. But I asked the question, what's the definition of whiteness today? Who is white? And, and if we start to even use that term, is that not racism?
I mean, it's, it's like the, I mean, you bring up a great question. It is like the, the transition when they talk about, when they talked about the Jewish people in that video, right? They were transition people.
Yeah.
And that's how they define sort of like, they were white, but they're not really white, right? They were in-
It's almost like transition, like they're gonna end up someplace else, you know?
Yeah. And so, you know, that was interesting. Zach, did you have something?
No. Did we answer my question though? Because I mean, I'm sorry, Zach, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it's a poignant question.
Yeah.
Who is white today? And I think that's very important because we're dealing with racism today, and then if we begin to define who is white today, is that not racism? That's very important to me in this discussion. Zach, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted-
If I could, Michael, if I could just, what's, part of what, part of what you're asking, Michael, we're gonna talk a little bit after the video. We're gonna, we're gonna define some things a little bit later, so I want to acknowledge that without us jumping ahead of ourselves, so I want if we could-
Thank you.
Hold off on that a little bit.
Got it.
But I also want to be able to hold in this space, all of us to a person process race. Right? Everyone to a person processes race in this country. We do a lot of it, most of it, we do it in the unconscious space.
Right.
And we'll talk about it later. So we, we all have a space where we, we process what white is, what black is, what Hispanic is, what Latinx is, what Asian is. To say you don't do it, you're not being honest with yourself. Right? So you have to acknowledge we all do it. Now, we may do it in different ways, and that's okay, and most of us, many times when we do it, we keep it in our unconscious, so we're not, just like the, just like the courts were being forced, to be forced to try to figure out how to define it, and they struggled to define it, and, and as you could see that. But what, what if someone would ask us how we would define it? What if someone would ask me, how would I define white? I was like, hmm, how would I define white? How would I define black? And that's part of what we're trying to ask, if you, just to reflect in your own space as you think about yourself, how you, you as a person, because all of us to a person does it. So how would you define it? You, yourself, Michael, you, Matt, you, Marianne, you, Zach, if you had to process in your head how you process white, what black is, how do you do it? We want to bring, we want you to bring those thoughts into the room.
I, I don't understand what you just said, and I'll tell you why. I see you as a black man, okay? Because of the color of your skin, but, and that's, that's self-evident, but I personally look back that, and when I look at you as a black man, I see a culture, I see a unique set of experiences, I see differences, but I don't see differences in the negative.
Yeah.
And so, and so, but, and, and I think, the way, what you just said sort of wants to tend to view the differences in the negative, and at some point in our history, I agree that occurred, but I, I'm, I'm very reluctant just to, to say that that exists everywhere all the time today. And, and, and I could only speak for myself because you asked me, okay? How do I interpret race, color, white, black, Japanese, whatever? I can't help it, okay? And I have a worldview. When I see a Japanese person, I see their culture, and I also see where maybe they have transitioned between cultures. I'm married to a Filipino lady, okay? And she is every bit Filipino, and she's every bit American, and she's every bit, you know what? She has Japanese tendencies and Korean tendencies. She is who she is. I see that. I can't make it a blank slate in the way I view you, or Gloria, or Matt, or any one of you. And so, is that question one that can't be answered?
So, I, I, I want to put pause on, Michael, because I don't, I don't want us to lean just into your reflection. I wanted to also hear from Zach and Matt, so let me, let's, let's step back from that just for a moment.
Okay.
To allow Zach and Matt also to kind of weigh in, so I know, Zach, you were trying to share and bring in some of your thoughts.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Leon. You know, I went to the, to the point about, you know, how much do you think about your whiteness? Personally, the older I get, the more I think about it, right? Like when you're, when I was younger anyways, it was sort of like I didn't think too much about it, and as you learn and as you grow and as you mature, personally, I think about it more and more every day. And, and you go back and you sort of watch that video, or you read, or you, you understand history, or at least acknowledge it, and, and you realize the, the privilege and the benefit that comes with that whiteness, right? That was, that was what the gatekeepers were keeping. They were saying, no, 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 this is where, where you have to be white in order to participate, to fully participate. I think it's, it's, when you look at people, it's like, how do you define whiteness? I think we actually saw this a couple, a couple of months ago at a council meeting where, you know, public comments sort of calling out, and Matt, you acknowledged that during your comments, and people, they're calling out people on the council and the race that they are, what they thought they were, right?
Yeah.
And they had absolutely no idea, but it was very easy for them to make people other very quickly, and they saw that and they said, oh, we're going to say that this person is from this country, but just to sort of create some false sense of diversity or something along those lines. So it's just really interesting how the community sort of processes some of these things and how we individually process them, you know, and to Mike's point, I mean, it's, for me, you know, looking at other people, it's like clearly the, the color of your skin, they say it in the video, is, is literally the first thing you see, is, is what do you do with that? When people say, well, I don't see race, it's like you see it immediately, what do you do with that information? That's the important thing, right? What do you do with that information? So, it's just interesting.
Yeah, thank you, Zach. I mean, I think, you know, when, when we look at that video and look at our history, you know, really biology was really the destiny, right? It really was a matter of life and death, right? It is exactly what you're saying. What do you do with it then? Right? It is the practices and the policies surrounding race that impacts, you know, individual, as we saw in this, in this video. And so, great reflection. Matt, did you have something to add?
Yeah, you know, they, they bring up the courts in, in the discussion of, you know, how we define whiteness, or, you know, the history of that in, in, in the United States, and it just reminds me, you know, when I was in law school, there were numbers of cases that, a variety of cases on some of our most critical, you know, and, and most sensitive topics in the country, where really, if you read very carefully the justices' opinions, right? These are the leaders, these are the decision-makers in our country. Their opinions in many of these, of the most sensitive cases, including with regard to, to race, the, the decision hinged on a, a, I know it when I see it, right? And, and so, you know, we, we get into that mindset of, you know, the, the folks who are in charge, who have a perspective, are the ones who get to make the definition, right?
Right.
And, and what Zach was referring to earlier, you know, we had a few council meetings ago where, you know, a gentleman had written in his public comments and, you know, talked about the diversity of the city council and said, you know, and, and made reference to me being of Middle Eastern descent, which surprised everybody, including myself. You know, and it's like, you know, and, you know, you have these conversations, and it's, and it's interesting because, you know, what was, was there malice behind that statement? Was it just a misinterpretation? Was it something he was told by somebody else? Who knows, right? Who cares? But the fact that you felt held to make that acknowledgement publicly, you know, places people in, in their silos, right? And it, and it places people in, in this description, you know, and, and, you know, I think it was, I can't remember the justice's name, it's not Blackburn, it's, it's Blackman or Black, Blackman or something, who, a pretty famous Supreme Court decision in the 70s, talking about affirmative action, and basically said, you know, hey, before we're gonna, you know, deal with racism, we have to acknowledge race, right? We have to embrace race first, then we can talk about racism. And I think, you know, part of that is, you know, and it almost seems antithetical, right? Acknowledging race almost seems to perpetuate the issue, right? But, you know, saying, and you hear folks say, talk about things like being colorblind, well, I don't see color, I don't see things that way, I don't see that. Well, in, in my opinion, it almost denigrates the, the history and the struggle that's occurred-
It does, yeah.
-in the United States, right? And so, there's nothing wrong with embracing, you know, the diversity in our world or in our country, in our city, and I think we're all sort of enthusiastically awaiting, you know, a, a point in, in our history where programs like affirmative action are no longer needed because that's no longer an issue and racism no longer exists, right? But it, you know, but to get there, we have to acknowledge race and racism. And, and so, you know, so it becomes, and Mike said this earlier, it becomes a very, I think, difficult conversation to have because for some folks, you know, the perspective is we're, we're actually embracing and instilling those same beliefs that we had, you know, 100 years ago, right? And, and so the, the path we're trying to navigate, and I appreciate the conversation we're having today, because the path we're trying to navigate is all about how do you, how do you thread that needle very carefully, acknowledging the past, acknowledging that there's a difference, acknowledging that every one of us has a perspective when we see an individual, and, and sometimes those perspectives, you know, are just patently wrong based on things like skin tone or, or, you know, hair color. And so, you know, how do we, how do we complete this transition from slavery to segregation to legal definitions of race to ultimately, you know, complete acceptance and inclusion, right? And I think that's, that's that phase we're in right now is trying to, to navigate that, and it's, you know, it hasn't been an easy road.
We could, that we could keep going with this discussion, Gloria. I don't know if you have some final thoughts, but we have to show the second part.
Thank you so much for that. I mean, I think you- I mean, I think you just brought it all together here. I mean, I, I think it, it really is, we are in this sort of space in America where, you know, we, we've gone through these different changes, and how do we actually take us to the next level of, of really transparency, inclusion, um, and what Zach is saying, right? It is you acknowledging, uh, that we are different, uh, but what do we do with that? And how are we careful to ensure that there is racial equity, um, in everything that we do? And particularly around your work as, um, as city leaders, uh, is acknowledging race and not moving away from it, but actually acknowledging and embracing it, uh, and ensuring that you are making decisions, uh, around, um, how race may or may not impact, uh, certain decisions that you, uh, that you make every day. Um, and so I know, Michael, you, uh, your questions are spot on, and we will get to them. Um, I think we'll, we'll talk about racism and, um, privilege, um, in the next few slides, and we'll get to that. Um, how, how are you feeling though, Mike? I just want to acknowledge, are you, did you?
I feel, oh no, I feel great. Um, I wonder if this conversation, you know, maybe we just reset everything moving forward. I mean, maybe we, I mean, we're sitting here having discussion, we're identifying those things, we're wondering how we create ready, and, uh, and, and why it's good to go back and see what we did wrong, okay? Um, and, and we did a lot right too, but we can see the atrocities that occurred, and we need to correct those. How do we do that moving forward? We now have definitions, we know the atrocities. Can we just acknowledge and move on and make sure we don't do those things again? Is that the, is that the answer? I don't know. I don't know what else we could do.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that. Uh, Leon, did you want to, um, Ian, I, I know you piped in, did you?
No, I'm super. I need, I gotta move this along here a little bit, just, uh, from a, from a step. Um, we want to play the, um, the second part of the video, uh, because there's more to kind of sit with and discuss. Um, so this, uh, so let me tee that up, so we can play that and come back and kind of do some, a little final reflection before we kind of go into our, um, kind of final phase of definitions. So, I'm gonna play the second part. You guys are seeing the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a time when hundreds of thousands of GIs came home, ready to start families, but had no place to live.
The living space was at a premium. In the Bronx, they tried building Quonset huts, and they turned to, to slums. All the Quonset huts had, uh, just disintegrated. There were two families sharing a hut. One family at one end, one family at the other, and before you know it, they were, they were awful.
FHA came to the rescue by insuring long-term, low monthly payment mortgage loans.
Veterans needed homes for families. They turned to a revolutionary New Deal housing program. It would racialize housing, wealth, and opportunity for decades in ways few could have imagined.
In the 1930s, the federal government created the Federal Housing Administration, whose job it was to, uh, provide loans, or the backing for loans, to average Americans so they could purchase a home.
Due to the stimulation of the National Housing Act, from every section of the country come reports of vastly.
In order to purchase a house in America prior to 1930s, you had to pay 50% of the sales price upfront. The new terms of purchasing a home was that you put 10% or 20% down, and the bank financed 80% of it, not over five years, but over 30 years, at relatively, uh, low rates. This opened up the opportunities for Americans to own homes like ever before. The average person could own that home.
If these terms sound familiar, they should, because this is essentially the same financing scheme that allows most Americans to own their homes today. Federal programs and banks sank millions into the home construction industry. Their message to veterans, you can afford a new home. Buy a new home now. On the outskirts of Baltimore, Memphis, Chicago, Los Angeles, Denver, and other cities, brand-new communities sprang up. One of the most famous was a Long Island potato field, transformed into 17,000 new homes. It was called Levittown. Tax dollars helped make the single-family home a mass-produced consumer item. The American dream had a new name: suburbia.
You have to remember, the people who came here in 1947, 1948, were young ex-GIs whose uppermost concern was taking advantage of GI Bill and making things better for themselves.
Before moving to Levittown, Herb Callisman and his wife Doris lived in a cramped attic apartment in New York City.
And when we began to look for an apartment, we found that the apartments were a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty dollars a month. I know that's unbelievable today, but it was too expensive for us. And out here in Levittown, the mortgage payments were sixty-five dollars a month.
They say your kitchen dazzles every eye. A brand-new sink, a built-in oven, a new refrigerator, and a.
If you were buying a Levittown in 1947, 48, 49, 50, and 51, you would get, this would be your kitchen. You would get a GE stove, GE refrigerator, and a Bendix wash machine. It would be part of the real estate.
We came to Levittown and we found the model house, and we walked in and we looked around, and, uh, of course, in the eyes of a, uh, young man who was raised in the ghetto, so to speak, it was an interesting experience, interesting lifestyle, seeing all the new modern conveniences. Very fascinating.
Eugene Burnett came home with almost a million other black GIs. They had fought for the country in segregated ranks. They returned hoping for equality and the American dream. For many, that dream was a new home for little money down and some of the easiest credit terms in history.
I went up to the salesman, we're interested in your home, we're interested in buying one, and, uh, what is the procedure? Is there an application to be filled out, so forth? So he looked at me, looked around, and he said to me, he says, listen, it's not me, but the owners of this development have not as yet decided to sell these homes to Negroes.
It was as though it wasn't real. You can't imagine, but for someone to come out and actually tell you that they can't sell to you, you know, I, I was really on an up. Man, look at this house. Can you imagine having this? And then for them to tell me because of the color of my skin, I can't be a part of it?
The FHA underwriters warned that the presence of even one or two non-white families could undermine real estate values in the new suburbs. These government guidelines were widely adopted by private industry. Race had long played a role in local real estate practices. Starting in the 1930s, government officials institutionalized a national appraisal system, where race was as much a factor in real estate assessment as the condition of the property. Using this scheme, federal investigators evaluated 239 cities across the country for financial risk.
So that those communities that were all white, suburban, and far away from minority areas, uh, they received the highest rating, and that was the color green. Those communities that were all minority or in the process of changing, they got the lowest rating, and the color red. They were redlined. As a consequence, most of the mortgages went to suburbanizing America, and it suburbanized it racially.
The racial logic adopts the principle that an integrated neighborhood is a bad risk, is a financial risk, that an integrated neighborhood is likely to be an unstable neighborhood, uh, unstable socially, but therefore also unstable economically.
When the white residents of Eight Mile Road in Detroit were told they were too close to a black neighborhood to qualify for a positive FHA rating, they built this six-foot wall between themselves and their black neighbors. Once the wall went up, mortgages on the white properties were approved. Between 1934 and 1962, the federal government underwrote $120 billion in new housing. Less than 2% went to non-whites.
I can understand an individual, depending on his environment, or his family, or whatever, uh, being racist, but for your country to, um, sanction it, give him tools to do that, there's something deadly wrong there.
I think we had the golden chance after World War II, and we, and we flubbed it, because, uh, and here, here we had a GI Bill that was, uh, opposed, you know, that was available to everybody, uh, but in a way, they didn't make it available to everybody. And, uh, and that was a golden opportunity in this country, and we missed it. We really missed it.
You can always tell, can't you? A town with good real estate people is a more substantial community, because more people own their own homes. That's right.
And now it's sort of hard to believe that the federal government nationalized and introduced redlining. In a funny way, it wasn't just giving something to whites, it was constructing whiteness. Whiteness meant, as, as in the past, whites had meant being a citizen and being a Christian. It now meant living in the suburbs.
Only 50 years before, European ethnics were believed to be distinct races. Now, in these new segregated neighborhoods, they blended together as white Americans.
We did have different religious groups. We were mixed up there, but, uh, we, we were an all-white community, and I think it's an unrealistic world. I think there's something sterile about everyone being on the same economic level and everyone being the same color.
It certainly doesn't promote, um, a feeling of a wider world, wider, not whiter, um, to live in a place where there are only people that look like you.
Cartoonist Bill Griffith remembers moving from Brooklyn to Levittown as a kid.
It's an untenable, artificial world. You're creating a weird utopia, in a way. A, a utopia of, of, you know, middle-class white people who are trying to deny that they were living in a multi-racial world. And how long can you keep that up? And you can't keep that up forever. Whether there were gonna be black people in Levittown was just, it would be almost the equivalent of saying, are there gonna be Martians in Levittown?
Basically, the idea of, of whiteness is who's included, who's part of the family, and it has material consequences. Blacks weren't completely left out of the housing market. The housing market that they were exposed to was largely public housing. And pu- public housing, first of all, was built almost exclusively, with some, with a few exceptions, in the central city. And after World War II, we started building these larger and larger public housing projects, which were called vertical ghettos. All of a sudden, you're concentrating large numbers of poor people of color in one place.
Another federal program, urban renewal, was supposed to make cities more livable. 90% of all housing destroyed by urban renewal was not replaced. Two-thirds of those displaced were black or Latino.
Fair housing for all, all human beings who live in this country is now a part of the American way of life.
In 1968, President Johnson signed the Fair Housing Act. For the first time, racial language was removed from federal housing policy. Non-white families began moving into traditionally white communities in numbers.
We lived in an apartment, a two, uh, two-family house in Queens, and when we came here, it was the first time we had bought a house, and I was looking for everything in the storybooks.
The Frisbees moved from Queens to suburban Roosevelt, only a few miles from Levittown. Like the Frisbees, many non-white families would discover the economic value of race in the real estate market. They watched as their homes and neighborhoods in suburbia declined precisely because they had moved into them.
When I moved into a neighborhood, I thought it would stay intact the way it was. On the street that I moved on, when I moved there, it was predominantly white. Within two years, it was predominantly black.
It was called blockbusting. Real estate agents preyed on the racial fears of white homeowners to get them to sell their homes quickly for less than market value. The homes were resold to non-whites at inflated prices.
Well, they would say, you know, we're having black people move in. Now, I will give you cash if you want to sell me your house. Do you want to stay with black people next door to you? And that's the way it went on. And, uh, as Bunny said, a lot of the people just said, yes, I'll take the money and run. And, uh, that's the start of the white people leaving.
As more black and Latino families moved to Roosevelt, real estate became more and more depressed, just as the FHA had predicted. But why?
I have an idea, my house is probably worth around 120 in this town, but what it would be worth in Wantor, uh, Garden City, or some other place, probably around 200,000 or better. Now, now you're talking about 80,000. You, uh, you said to me one time about, why do people dislike the blacks? Well, money-wise, there's a reason. Not that you dislike the blacks so much, but you dislike what happens when a community turns from white to black.
It wasn't African-Americans moving in that caused housing values to go down in Roosevelt and other neighborhoods. It was whites leaving.
When a neighborhood, a previously white neighborhood starts to integrate, even if individual whites don't have personal or psychological animosity or racial hatred, they still have an economic incentive to leave, because they recognize that others might make the same calculation and leave first. So you get a vicious circle where whites calculate that other whites are gonna sell when a neighborhood integrates, therefore they want to sell first to avoid losses, and they actually make it happen. They make white flight happen.
And if you think about African-Americans, if African-Americans are 20% of that market, it means that 80% of the people are not looking in those places for homes. So the prices of those homes declines or stays stable. And banks contribute to this by continually making. by continually making loans in regions that are on the rise, white communities, and making it difficult to get loans in black communities.
So there's a difference. There's a lack of symmetry that's important to keep in mind that, so it's not the same when whites are all by themselves. Because when they're all by themselves, they're taking all the resources with them. They're taking all the amenities with them. But when blacks are by themselves, they can't get loans. They don't have a decent tax base. There are no jobs. And then that becomes associated with black space.
In the end, what happened to Roosevelt happens in many neighborhoods when white families and businesses flee. The tax base eroded. Schools and services declined. The town was seen by county officials as a legitimate dumping ground for welfare families.
At one point, we had explicit laws that says, whites are on top and blacks are on the bottom. Today, we have many of the same practices without the explicit language. And those practices are largely inscribed in geography. And so geography does the work of Jim Crow laws. So many people are confused as, why, after 50 years of civil rights, are our schools still segregated? Why are our housing markets still segregated? Why are our jobs still segregated? And again, a lot of this is a function of how we reinscribe the racial geographic space in the United States. That structure is still what we're living with today.
As homes in white communities appreciated in value, the net worth of these white families grew. For most non-white families who stayed in urban neighborhoods, the housing market opened to them in the '50s and '60s was largely a rental market. You don't gain equity by paying rent.
Where one's family lives in America is not just a matter of taste and preference. You have the issue of housing and wealth. The majority of Americans hold most of their wealth in the form of home equity. So that's their nest egg. That's how they can finance the education of their offspring. That's how they can sort of save up for retirement. It's their savings bank, right? They're living in their savings bank.
My family, like a lot of families, was in Detroit, struggling to buy a house. You had a dual housing market, one white, one black. A housing market with one with a lot of demand, another housing market with very little demand. My father lives in the house that I grew up in. The house today, five-bedroom house, is worth about $20,000. The same house bought in the suburbs would be worth today about $320,000. So whites moving to the suburb were being subsidized in the accumulation of wealth, while blacks were being divested.
And these were public policy decisions in which, on one hand, people were given access to property, given title, and subsequently, wealth. And on another hand, where people were not given access to property did not generate wealth and did not generate the kind of opportunity for the next generation.
So if you can get a government loan and with your GI bill, your newly earned college degree, and buy a house in an all-white area that then appreciates in value, that then you can pass on to your children, and then you're passing on wealth, that has all been made more available to you as a consequence of racist policies and practices. To the child of that parent, it looks like my father worked hard, bought a house, passed his wealth on to me, made it possible for me to go to school, mortgaged that house so I could have, you know, relatively debt-free college experience and finance my college education. How come your father didn't do that? You know, well, there's some good reasons why maybe your father had a harder time doing it if you're African-American or Latino or Native American.
And the thing that's really slick about whiteness, if you will, is that most of the benefits can be obtained without ever doing anything personally. For whites, they're getting the spoils of the racist system, even if they're not personally racist.
To glimpse one of the far-reaching consequences of racial inequality, you need only consider one statistic, comparative net worth or wealth. If you add up everything you own and subtract all your debts, what's left is your net worth.
Today, the average black family has only one-eighth the net worth or assets of the average white family. That difference has seemingly grown since the 1960s, since the civil rights triumphs, and is not explained by other factors like education, earnings rates, savings rates. It is really the legacy of racial inequality from generations past. No other measure captures the legacy, the sort of cumulative disadvantage of race or cumulative advantage of race for whites, the net worth or wealth.
Even with the same income, white families have, on average, twice the wealth of black families. Much of that difference lies in the value of their homes. But what happens when we compare families along the color line who have similar wealth?
When you make the right comparison, when you compare a black kid from a family with the same income and wealth level as the white kid from the similar economic situation, rates of college graduation are the same. Rates of employment and work hours are the same. Rates of welfare usage are the same. So when we're talking about race in terms of a cultural accounting of these differences or a genetic accounting of these differences, we're really missing the picture because we're making the wrong comparison.
We want to be a colorblind society that values the content of character over the color of skin. The hope of thousands of newcomers who arrive each year is that we already are. I don't see color. I see people. The saying goes...
There are people from a hundred other nations who look different from you. People whose religion, history, skin color, and reason for being here today may be different from yours.
But in post-civil rights America, is colorblindness the same as equality?
The notion of colorblindness came to us from that famous "I have a dream" speech of Dr. Martin Luther King, where he said that people should be judged by the content of their character and not by the color of the skin. And what has happened in the post-civil rights era is that whites have assumed that we are already there, that we're in a society where color does not matter.
On the one hand, civil rights era officially ended inequality of opportunity, officially ended de jure legal inequality. At the same time, those civil rights triumphs did nothing to address the underlying economic and social inequalities that had already been in place. It doesn't recognize the fact that the rewards, the house, the Lexus, the, you know, the big bank account, those are not only the rewards, the pot of gold, the end of the game, they're also the starting position for the next generation.
The wealth gap grows. The advantages of being white accumulate from one generation to the next.
What are the benefits or the advantages to being white in a society that has historically given benefits and advantages to members of the dominant group? And if you are a person who has that privilege, you don't necessarily notice it.
So until we recognize that there's really no way to talk about equality of opportunity without talking about equality of condition, then we're stuck with this paradoxical idea of a colorblind society in a society that's totally unequal by color.
Claiming we don't see race won't end racial inequality. As Supreme Court Justice Harry Blackman said, "To get beyond racism, we must first take account of race." There is no other way.
And just as we're born into this system, we don't ask to be loaded up with stereotypes or omissions or distortions when we come into the world. We don't ask to be in a structure which is unfair, but that's what we have inherited. Whether you identify as a person of color, whether you identify as a white person, it doesn't matter.
I think we have to be uncomfortable with the present racial arrangement. In a sense, I think we have to be willing to be uncomfortable, willing to demand more of ourselves and more of our country. And willing to make the invisible visible.
I think we all have to think about, what can I influence? I don't influence everything, but the things I do influence, I can think about, how am I making this a more equitable environment? I can ask myself, who's included in this picture and who isn't? Who's had opportunities in my environment and who hasn't? What can I do about that?
All right, come on back together. So know that that's a lot of information to take in. So just giving you guys a moment as well to kind of, just kind of do a little deep breath exercise for yourself. Again, just very mindful to get deep breaths in. Let it out. Deep breath in. Let it out. So Matt, I had to tell you, I was impressed that you quoted Justice Blackman. I didn't want to call it out. You know, when you said it, I was like, man, he's about to, they're about to mention that in the second part of the video about what Justice Blackman said. I'm not curious if you caught that and had that same thought.
Yeah, I was a little surprised. Yeah, that's cool. You know, I just remember that from a course in law school and discussion about civil rights and affirmative action, employment law, that sort of thing. And didn't remember his name perfectly, but the concept stuck with me at least.
That's right. Well, we have the time because we have about 40 minutes left. And what we'd like to do is just give each of you a chance to have your own individual reflection of what, kind of what you're processing from that. And then Gloria and I will kind of tag team, kind of walking through some content, naming some language and terminology. We want to make sure we do that with the time we have. But I just wanted to give each of you a chance to kind of share your reflections of stuff that you saw there that may be a lightbulb moment or kind of reaction to it that you want to kind of bring into the space.
You're on mute, Marianne.
Finding that mute button can be challenging sometimes.
I said I'm not going to go first this time.
I'll go first if no one else wants to. Or Matt, you look like you want to go first now.
I could kick off some conversation here. You know, it's interesting because this, you know, I recall some of this video, Leon, from the League of Cities meeting, right?
Condensed version of it, yeah.
Yeah, it was a condensed version. And so there was a lot of additional, you know, information, I think, that was beneficial. But, you know, it reminds me, so, you know, I do a lot of lecturing on various topics and land use and development and so forth, environmental law, you know, all this kind of stuff. And, you know, watching this, I wrote down a few thoughts. You know, a lot of our authority as a country comes from the Constitution. And a big part of our authority is based on economic prosperity, right? Whether it's commerce or tax or other affirmative acknowledgements in the Constitution, a lot of what we talk about with regard to prosperity has to do with, you know, economic considerations, right? And so that drives everything, and even today. And it's where we derive a lot of our authority for laws that aren't specifically called out in the Constitution either. I mean, we don't have a law on the Endangered Species Act, but, you know, and protecting endangered species, right? That's not in the Constitution. But we created a law for it based on our commerce powers and the impacts that that would have, right? And so they made these, you know, in some cases, tenuous connections, but a lot of it goes back to taxation, commerce, you know, other foundational elements. And so I think post-World War II, we sort of viciously protected our economy, right? Post-World War II, post-Great Depression. And so we wanted to create, you know, everybody came back with this new ethic, the new spirit, the Greatest Generation, you know, they call themselves, right? Came back with this concept of recreating America. And so it wasn't a surprise that while all this is going on, we're also defining whiteness, you know, within our country. And the whole concept here, you know, is sort of based off of being risk averse, right? In managing a recovery for your country, you want it to be risk averse. And so, you know, it reminds me of like, all the zoning laws we have came out of the Chicago's World Fair in 1890s, right? And the whole point was, let's put houses, and this is before we had zoning authority and all of this, and, but let's put houses where it's not next to like slaughter yards and, you know, heavy industrial and, you know, that kind of thing. Like, let's make our communities safe and prosperous by kind of isolating things that can impact them negatively, right? And so then, you know, flash forward into the 1940s, 1950s, where we're creating a whole economy around prosperity. And, you know, I'm not making excuses for these decisions, but certainly the economists, the academics, the decision-makers, you know, they were so myopic in their views that they became really focused on commerce and taxes and economic prosperity. And anything that they saw as a hindrance to that, you know, like we're seeing in the FHA, you know, reports and all that, anything that became a hindrance to that was written into these documents as, you know, a potential risk. And then everybody took it to this extreme of, you know, redlining and all the other results based on that. And I think that's where we, you know, we tend to forget our history, and I appreciate you bringing this out because we tend to forget our history of where all of this stuff has its roots, how we got to where we are today. And when we talk about implicit or institutional bias and how pervasive it is and how it's been reinforced over the generations, it's because of a lot of these issues that are being talked about. So, you know, I think this has been incredibly enlightening, especially when you think about what we as a local government have to do with regard to zoning and housing and all of the decisions that fall on local government and make that acknowledgement and recognize. And I think that's the value of having this conversation, putting together the Ready Commission and other steps we're taking to acknowledge that there is a bias in decision-making. And it is even pervasive in a city like our own that's only 31 years old. You know, but we're still based off of these other institutions that were created, you know, over the past 150, 200-so years of, you know, that sort of, you know, continuing institutional or implicit bias. So I'll stop there, but I just found that to be kind of a fascinating, you know, for me, it pulled together a lot of strings, you know, in my thinking.
Thank you for sharing that. Matt, Zach, you want to go next?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no, I think as I watched that and some of that I had either read or had seen in the past and sort of trying to understand like how I got where I am as a white man, you know, living in Temecula now. And I made a few notes going through as we were watching it. And one of the things that always strikes me is how arts and culture is used to promote something, right? Like whether it was a melting pot Broadway play or whether it's some of the commercials you see about suburbia, this, how it sort of seeps into your daily life, the things you see and normalizing what you're looking at. You know, the redlining and the access to capital, creating generational wealth. I mean, these are all things that like, as an adult now, I think about those more and more, right? Like I look at how that's helped me get to where I'm at. And I can say, well, I worked really hard when I was 18 and I worked two jobs and I did this and I did that. And, but the reality is, is I kind of started on the 75-yard line, running the 100-yard dash. I've got a pretty sizable head start when I look at my family and the wealth that they inherited and then passed on to me. And so it was nice to see that sort of laid out in there as like, this is sort of the average white person. white person accepts that as just hard work, but the reality is, is there's a whole lot more to it. You know, when you get down to the local level where we're at now, and, and Matt, you bring it up, you talk about land use decisions. And my wife's a school teacher and she works at Temecula Elementary School. And while on the whole, you look at Temecula Valley Unified as a sort of, you know, it is the pinnacle in our region of school districts, there are sites within the city that struggle, right? And a lot of that has to do with land use development around those sites and, and how that plays into the student population and whatnot. I had a conversation with a friend of mine who just happens to be a Realtor. And we were talking about what it looks like selling homes and even in our community, black and brown families are having the discussion of, do I take those pictures off the wall when I want to sell my home, right? Is my house more valuable if it's perceived to be a white home? And so even though we might not see that here in Temecula on the daily, at least us here in the space, those are some of those conversations that folks are having in our community. And that isn't, it is a reflection on the system, it is a reflection on our history, it is a reflection on many things. So those are the things that sort of struck out to me. I've been, I don't know if, if y'all been watching, Emmanuel Ocho has a show now, it's called Uncomfortable Conversations with a Black Man, right? And these are really valuable conversations that, that people have been having. And his last one was with the police department and, and I'm just going to quote him. And he writes, proximity breeds care and distance breeds fear. And you sort of listen to that and you say, okay, you know, you didn't see that when you saw some of the white flight, there was proximity. And they're like, putting the economic health of themselves above that, right? So I think this all really ties back to, you know, the economy and personal wealth. And, and really, again, for me, and I'm just being brutally honest, and quite frankly, this is an interesting way to have this conversation, right? With the community and the community watching and, and then just sort of doing it in the space. So pardon me if I'm, you know, sort of struggling with some of this, but it, it's just, it's just, it's just difficult, the decisions that we have to make and, and sort of, for me, being able to acknowledge and really try to understand what other folks are going through, even in our own community, moving forward. How do we bridge that gap and how do we, like with respect to generational wealth? How do, how do I personally move the needle on that? And I don't, and I don't know what that answer is, but that's just some of where I'm at.
Okay, thank you for sharing, Zach. Appreciate those thoughts. Mary Ann, you want to go next?
Well, you know, I go back to when we first opened the conversation, you had us consider, how did we consider or how had we considered that our race played into our upbringing or our, you know, position in life and all that? And so I think you asked, you know, how do you feel about, how do you gauge, you know, your, the fact that you're white? You know, how do you feel about yourself being white? And I said, you know, I never think about myself being white, but I take it back now that we've been watching some of this. I sang and traveled with Donna Summer for two years and her family. And, and, you know, we were on the road mostly in California and I was the only white person in the group. And so a lot of places that we played and, and performed were, you know, all black venues. And so I guess if there's any time that I ever thought about myself as being white, they used to make fun of my hair products. I mean, they treated me like family. I felt like I was part of that family. So, you know, it was a really good experience for me and I would hope that we're the, you know, if, if that were in reverse, I would hope that anybody that I would work with and travel with that, you know, happened to be the only ethnic person in the group, that they would feel the same way. So I guess at that point I did think about being white, but it was such a positive experience that, you know, I don't have any negative experiences dealing with race like that. But it, it makes my heart ache for people who do, or for people who feel like they're inferior or, or less than. But we look back at everything that we've seen today and there, there's an absolute reason for it. You know, and it's historic and it's endemic built into the system, which I never really thought about it before. I knew it was there and I'm sitting here with my copy of The Help and, you know, Selma and 42 and, and The Long Walk and, and all the other books I've read. And so it's evident that it's there, but I don't know that any of us really thought about how that happened. We just think that, you know, slavery never really went away, but it kind of morphed into different, a different thing. And we saw it today in zoning and housing and finance and, and things like that. And, you know, it still happens today. Here in Temecula, we are, our, when we finance a house, we are combined with the data that comes from San Bernardino County. And because it's a, you know, a little bit lower socioeconomic county, economies aren't as strong there. It hurts our chances of being able to borrow, you know, to get loans, to, to get loans on our homes because we're lumped in with an area. So in that regard, we kind of can see how that, you know, how that is wrong. Not that it impacts us all that much, but it is there. So the system still has a long way to go. But the fact that people set, stand by and allow it to happen, or did allow it to happen when it was just so blatant, because it was just a part of, you know, their everyday life. They were, sadly, they were accustomed to it. And, you know, the whites liked it or never thought about it, but the whites were fortunate and didn't probably have to think about it. But the people who were really impacted negatively did have to think about it. So it is a lot to take in, but it kind of helps you see how we've gotten to where we are today. And still some of these, I don't want to say intentional policies, but certainly they're grandfathered in policies or they're just practices that people continue to fall back on that are. And we have to remember too, that there's a difference between equal and equitable. There is a difference. So, you know, and I hope we keep that in mind too.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Michael?
Yeah, I'm just making a quick note. It's kind of a little bit of an emotional subject for me and I'll, I'll explain why. I'll start off with, you know, I, I liked watching the, the, the video. Clearly, you know, those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it, as the saying goes. And so we certainly need to learn from history. I also agree in many ways with what my colleague said. I grew up in southeast Los Angeles. I grew up in a black community. All of my friends were black. If I was to show you my high school and junior high yearbook, you would find that I was a minority. And I don't talk about that very much. And the old adage, you know, I have friends who are black is very true today. Some of my best friends are of color, even to this day, because I grew up with them. But I have to tell you, where I grew up, I'm not white, but I was considered white just because there was no other way that you can categorize me. And I would say regularly, I won't say daily, but regularly, I was the victim of racism or what you might call reverse racism. I was the white boy. Oh, you're listening to white boy music. Oh, you know, only white people eat that type of food, you know? I mean, that happened regularly. So, you know, I learned to, I learned to live with that and it was what it was. And, you know, it was a very bad neighborhood and you either gravitated toward drugs and gangs or you graduated towards sports. And you know what? I passed through one to get to the other and mostly to sports. But there wasn't a day, and I mean this sincerely, I didn't go to school in fear and altered my personality, my demeanor, the way I walked, the way I dressed, just to stay safe. So when I watch a video like that, I, I know what you just said is true and it was, or in the video is true. But it also has to be careful to make an overgeneralization because it reached in many, many other aspects than just what was shown. Now, I, you know, the city council here has identified inclusion to also include special needs and those people with disabilities. And I know that's probably not your bailiwick here, Leon. I mean, you're pretty much focused on the race issue, but I, I have a son who's autistic and I live that prejudice almost every day. We avoid people. We don't go to places because there's a stark contrast to what we, what occurs to us. And people can't help it. So I've learned to just forgive people. And maybe even that bridges over into the race inequity that we're talking about. Just a lot of ignorant people from not giving us the time of day, to not knowing how to interact, to not being polite, to going out of their way to ignore, you know, it's just a lot of ignorance, especially from other children my son's age, who look at him and point and laugh and see why he's acting weird and all that other stuff. And this council, more than any, particularly over the past 10 years and even recently with our decision to do Friendship Park, to take on, you know, racism and inclusion from a childhood level is extremely commendable. I, I don't, I don't like the idea that somebody would come to me and say, you're prejudiced or you're racist and you don't know it. Because that sort of cuts off the argument, that sort of cuts off the dialogue. It also nullifies the other person who is the, who is the subject of that. If somebody came up to me and says, you know, you're racist and don't even know it, geez, argument over. I got nothing to say at that point. You, we can't even have the discussion. I, I, everybody likes what Martin Luther King says, that you should be judged by the content of your character and not the color of your skin. Are we doing that today? And I mean, around the horn. I understand because of history, that you just showed in that video, that there's a great focus on whiteness. I understand that. And we should look at that so we don't repeat those things. But we cannot use whiteness today to continue any form of racism. We have to make that transition into content of character. And that's what I talked about with my last statement or comment, that at some point, maybe we reset this whole thing and move forward. I don't want to misinterpret it. We still need to look in the past to see what we did wrong or to see what we should have done better, or to see the travesties that we did. A couple of other points. I, I had mentioned earlier that, you know, I, I am, I am of Middle Eastern descent and my wife is Asian. And I remember when they came to this country from the Philippines in 1987, they came with nothing, absolutely nothing. And I watched my, my mother and father-in-law, which I got to know after we got married, which was 1991, just a few years. You know, they went to work every day and sometimes they had shifts that didn't coincide with each other. They didn't go out to eat, they didn't live luxuriously. They made their food at home, rice and soup and things like that. They lived very meagerly because they saved their money. And as they saved their money, they invested it the best that they could. And again, they worked every day, day in, day out, no vacations, none of this. And eventually they accumulated wealth because that was their goal for their children, was to set up that generational wealth. And so I, I, again, I, I take caution when we overgeneralize. Was there a disparity in the ability to create generational wealth? No question, okay? And we, we need to look at that. But I don't want to label the transfer of generational wealth, some sort of inequality everywhere because there's a lot of people, I might even say a preponderance of people who acquire generational wealth another way. My last comment is something that I want to, I don't think my colleague, Mary Ann Edwards, meant this. But I, I, but I want to clarify. I don't think she, she said this, but, you know, I, I could believe in equal opportunity. That is something we all need to fight for. But I cannot agree in an equal outcome. There's too many variables there, too many.
No, I didn't, I didn't, if I said that.
Oh, I know you didn't. I didn't, that's what I said. I didn't think you were alluding to that. I will stand up and fight. And I told you, I hate bullies. I, I, I hate injustice. That's why I'm on the city council and I've said it over and over. I will do everything I can, and I think I have in my, in my 21 years. Leon's soon to end in about a month, and Gloria, to create an equal opportunity everywhere. But I don't know that us as a human race can create an equal outcome. I, I don't know if that's possible without taking on some other form of government. And that's pretty much my comments.
I have a question to Mike. So can we, just, just one question. Can we, can we provide that? Can we, can we ensure that people have an equal opportunity? And, and if we do that and give everyone an equal chance, is that enough? I mean, we can't, you know, we can't go on beyond that, I think, in, in favor. But I think we can level the playing field as much as we can and just continue to, you know, continue to check it and make sure that that happens so that. But there are people who feel even if they have equal opportunity, they're not comfortable, they don't feel safe, they don't feel confident enough to take advantage of it because of everything that we've seen in the video this morning. So.
So if I could, you got, there's a lot to unpack and a lot of conversation here to, to play out. And we, we've designed a training that is so condensed already that we are not going to be able to, normally we do these training, trainings over six to eight hours and allow for some of this rich discussion to play out. And I really do appreciate what you guys are leaning in, you're kind of wanting to have the conversation, which I think is awesome. But as your facilitators, we, you know, we're not able to facilitate exactly the way we would want to have the conversation with you, but we want you to hear each other in a way that allows you to kind of see, how do you continue to sit with some of this conversation as you continue to talk about this journey that you guys are on? What I would like to do though is two things. One, we're, we are at 13 minutes before the top of your hour at 1 o'clock. And that's what we're scheduled for. I'm wondering if we, if there's possible for us to try to maybe have, try to wrap up in 30 minutes, maybe go 15 minutes past that, if that's, does that work for everyone? And we'll try our, our part to, does that not work, Mary Ann?
I'm fine.
Oh, I thought you said no. Okay.
Oh, no, no, I'm fine.
Okay. So we will, what, what Gloria and I will try to do, we wanted to at least create this space where we're naming some shared language. Like what you were saying earlier, equity versus equality and bringing in some of that. And so we want to name some of that as part of normalizing the conversation. This first part of normalizing, as we said from the training, our objective was to sit with history and understand history as you think about current context. So that was our goal today for you, what, that was one of our objectives, to be able to create that space. And as I share my screen again, the reason why we do that, are you guys seeing?
Yes.
Not now. Oh, sorry. Let me try it again. The PowerPoint presentation. There we go. And so the reason why we wanted to share just history, we're not going to lean into this as much, but the reason why we name it is like, obviously we know Temecula is kind of in between San, San Diego and Los Angeles. But just understanding that history, right? Both understanding this is Los Angeles redlining map, right? And then to the right is kind of the more, the 2010 census of the racial demographics of Los Angeles in the area right now. And realizing, if you start to look more carefully at it, if you start looking at the data, you know, where these neighborhoods, where people ended up, where they ended up today is not by accident, right? As we think about neighborhoods, right, and how neighborhoods were designed, it's not just that this happened 80 years ago, right? It's understanding racist policies that were created 80 years ago haven't never really been fully addressed as we understand how these neighborhoods still ended up where they ended up, where people ended up where they ended up. And that's not just, as you can see in Los Angeles, this is also a map of the San Diego region. And looking at, kind of this is the, the redlining map of the San Diego region, but also just looking at where the concentration of populations are as it relates to where redlining was in their, in their community, right? And while Temecula is only 31 years old, as you described it, is how are you thinking about that narrative even as you're looking at data within your city, right? This is Temecula, and even as we look at racial breakdowns within your city, you can start to see that where the, where the higher percentage of white people are living and where the higher percentage of Hispanic and Latinx communities are living, where the higher percentage of the black community and your Asian community. And you start to see that there's a narrative behind there, right? And what is that narrative, even, even though it's a 31-year history, what is that narrative? And to be able to create the space to be able to have that, that conversation, right? And, and so I wanted to name that, you know, and knowing that there's so much. And and so wanted to name that, um you know, uh and knowing that there's so much more to unpack there. Uh we thought we would be in a place where we could give you a break, but we're just gonna wrap up at this point. Uh because it's been such good conversation. Um and so I wanna just name a few, some length, uh some terminology. Uh Mary Ann, you talked about the differences between.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, that's exactly.
Equality and equity, right? And as we talk about equality and equity. Um you know, this this is, for those that have seen this very simple way of understanding equality and equity, it's a really helpful way. Of not trying to use the words interchangeably, right? Here, equality is three people here trying to watch the game from behind the fence, and you give them all the same thing. Equity is what do they need? If the goal is for them to watch the game from behind the fence. So equality is giving them what they, uh giving everyone the same. Equity is giving folks what they need if the goal is to watch the game from behind the fence. And this is a very simple way of understanding it. Equality versus equity, but equity, as you start to take on equity work, it's much more complicated than that, right? It's it's, even if you were to take the same question of three people trying to watch the game from behind the fence, there are lots of other questions you could be asking. Your questions about, are we assuming that they're different heights, or they have different, they have different problems? Why, why would, why do we make them different heights? Um as we're looking at the, you know, the challenges that are that are facing them as they're trying to watch the game from behind the fence. Is there something wrong with the ground that they're standing on? Not necessarily their height. Is there something wrong with the ground that we need to look at? Or is there something wrong with the fence if the goal is to watch the game from behind the fence? Or do we have the wrong goal? Why is the goal for them to watch the game from behind the fence? Why, why isn't it the goal for them to be watching the game in the stands? Or to be playing in the game, or to be owning the team? Equity is a lot more complicated as we start to understand these issues. But what's really important, and you said this, Mary Ann, as well, is like you understand at least the differences. Between equity and equality, and you're not using the words interchangeably as you start to try to figure out what the equity work is. Um and so for us, just in terms of just normalizing it, we wanna be able to make sure we're naming that. That's a really important uh important in terms of sitting with that. The other piece that we've been talking a little bit about that we think it's also important to name is understanding bias as we talk about racial equity. When we talk about racial equity and we talk about bias, it's important to understand we all have bias. We all um make these quick associations and evaluations between one group and as it relates to another. That's. That's what bias is. How do we evaluate ourselves as one group as it relates to another? We all are constantly doing that, wearing different hats. Whether I'm a man, or I'm or I'm a athlete, or I'm a a uh or I'm a person of faith. I mean, you always are making associations between one group and another. It's a constant thing that we do. It's an inescapable reality. The reason why we bring it up um in the work is uh is because we wanna be very careful about how bias influences our actions. Particularly when the bias can influence our actions that lead to being negative outcomes or being discriminatory. And understanding bias, particularly understanding implicit bias in that space, is so important in centering it in your work around racial equity. And so when we talk about implicit bias, this is this is a space that a lot of cities are really talking about. What do we mean as we talk about implicit bias? Right? It's the un- unconscious mind, neuro- neuro- neuroscience scientists really talk about how our brains work. Where we um we we are mindful, we're conscious of five percent of our brain activity. Ninety-five percent of it where it's in the unconscious. All the, all the bits of information we're taking in all the time. Our brains are quickly sorting things into frames, uh make, trying to understand the world, sort things into categories, trying to fill in the gaps. It's just how our brain works, right? As we think about how we process information. And that's really important to sit with, knowing that we all have it. Um as we try to process how we uh understand and just take in information on a regular basis. Uh and so while we're not, this is a training where we're not able to go as deep as we want to into the training. I do wanna play this short video. I think Matt, you may have seen it before. I'm not sure if Mary Ann or others have seen it. But I wanna play this short video and as as a way of how our brains work, uh wanna play it to kind of see how well you do.
This is an awareness test. How many passes does the team in white make?
Matt, you saw, you've seen this before, right, Matt?
I have too.
You have seen it before? Uh Michael, have you seen it before?
No.
What about you, Zach?
Yeah.
Okay, so three of the four, so were you counting the passes, Michael?
Uh I lost track. I tried first.
You tried, okay. So you lost track. What what was your last number? What was your latest number?
Um I, after I lost, three, four, right around there. Then I just got blurry to me.
All right, okay. Well, and that, and for those that have seen it, that's actually not the point of the of the video, so we'll play the full video. Just for Michael as well to be able to see it.
The answer is thirteen. But did you see the moonwalking bear?
Did you see the bear there, Michael?
Yeah, so I saw the bear.
Yeah, so and and the reason why we do it, um this activity when we do it in a training, um is for people who have not seen it before. And uh when you saw it for the first time, Zach or Mary Ann or Matt, you know, most of us didn't see the bear the first.
I didn't see the bear, no.
Right? And and the acknowledgement is really more so, our brains are taking in thousands of bits of information every second. Ninety-five percent of it we're not conscious of, right? And so to a person, the exercise is acknowledging, oh, my brain does that, right? I'm taking in information, even though I may not have seen the bear the first time, my brain still saw it. It was still there, it just wasn't, it was in the unconscious space. Right? And so it's acknowledging us being able to take in information all the time, but where most of the information we're taking in, we're not conscious. And the reason why that is a good tee-up for us as we talk about this is really understanding, how then do we think about how we think about race in this country? How we each have learned what race is, right? Each of us have learned about race, how we've been exposed. And we've made a a lot of the stuff that we have understood about race has happened in our unconscious. How we have made associations about uh white, or what it means to be black, or what it means to be Asian, or what it means to be Latinx. And how we've made associations and unconsciously are making automatic associations and identity with certain characteristics of groups. That we're constantly doing that on a regular basis, right? And so most of us, so a person do that, and it's, and so we call that out from what we know in the research. So when we start to look at the research, the what we know is that there is a strong unconscious implicit association. That exists between African Americans and criminal activity. Happens in our brain in an unconscious way, right? And so to be able to name that is really important as you lean in and realize, okay, this is, it's not a personal attack on anyone, it's not intended to be that. It's just acknowledging, thinking about how I was exposed from the media that I've been exposed to, to where I've lived, to where I've grown up. To the neighborhoods I've been in, to uh all of the experiences that we've had that has happened consciously and unconsciously and how we have understood race. It's really important to name and how we understand that. Um and so I wanna play this short video, um that we're not gonna be able to talk about it, but I I wanted to at least name it because I thought at least. Um it's called The Look, uh which was done by our colleagues at Procter and Gamble. And um what it does is kind of name some things that I thought would be, um you know, at least something to sit with, get, are you paying attention to the look? So play the video. By accident, too short. Um so the, this is a, obviously, it would be a great place for a discussion, but. Um just because as we talk about the look, you know, it's like, what what is the look as we talk about the judge's experience? As he's, what it looks like he's walking with his son, um you know, and and passing by someone in the car with like, looks like a mom with her daughter. What's the look that the judge is experiencing? What's the look of the judge that he's experiencing as he's trying to catch the elevator? What's the the look that the judge is experiencing when he's at the diner? Uh what's the look that the judge is experiencing when he is in the pool with his son? Um or the look he's experiencing when he is in the store? Uh or even the look that he's experiencing when he walks into uh to the court courthouse? And creating a space just to understand, you know, the experiences, right? As we talk about, if we know our brains work um um consciously and unconsciously, and there are activities happening all around us. How do we be more mindful of the understanding those experiences, things that we're not even being conscious about, right? As we are kind of naming that and really trying to understand how that potentially could show up. Um and so a- again, with the, wanted to at least bring that into the space as we're laying a foundation, knowing. That um you know, there's a lot there to unpack and have a conversation about. Um and the reason why we spend a little time on the bias space is because part of what we wanna just acknowledge to do this work. Is a willingness not to suppress your bias. Not to say I don't have it. We all have it, right? To a person, this is not a guilt thing. It's not like, oh, you're the only one that has it. We all have it, right? In terms of how we've been exposed and how we've been uh exposed as we understand race. And so there's gotta be a willingness to be able to name that, and then think about what the work you need to do to take action, to be accountable. Because that's how you start moving some of the things that have been in your unconscious, is how you start moving it into your conscious space. By you being more intentional about understanding kind of what's been sitting in your unconscious, right? Um and so as we talk about um uh being more intentional about that, we, it's also really important to make sure we're thinking about it at different levels, right? Because as we talk about our bias and how it shows up at the individual level, it also plays out in our institutions, in our agencies, in our departments, in our organizations. Um as we understand how bias shows up explicitly and implicitly. Most of us can recognize the explicit behaviors, right? Those are the clear behaviors that we all can pick up. We know it's discriminatory, we know it's wrong. It's really the implicit. It's stuff that is happening that it's not being explicit about race, it's not being explicit about actions. But it has the unintended consequences to a certain, to particular groups, whether it happens at the institutional level or at the individual level. It's the stuff that's happening in our unconscious where you uh potentially are now um not realizing by your behavior is having an impact. It's leading to potentially negative outcomes or um or discriminatory behavior, right? And so when we talk about the individual implicit, that unconscious, that example here, here's an example that we know from the research. Employers um not calling back um applicants with black sounding names. So we know people who are named Emily and Brad get um higher return, uh higher return calls than people named Jamal or Keisha, right? And so we know that from all of the studies that have been done in that space. And then if you ask an employer if it's conscious, many times it's like, we're not being, we're not being very conscious about that. And so what, how is that? Again, there could be cases where they are, but just acknowledging a lot of that and the, at the individual implicit level. Versus the institutional implicit, which are policies that negatively impact one group unintentionally. So there's nothing in a policy that is speaking about race, but yeah, but it but it has a negative impact potentially on that group or any other group. Potentially, as you're looking at kind of where they could be discriminatory, right? And so for instance, the example of stop and frisk was an an example of, you know, a policy that never really called out race. New York City was most popular about that policy, but when they started looking at who the police were disproportionately arresting, they ended up being black and um and Hispanic men. And so that again is an example of a policy. Now, what we're sharing with you is spaces where it's really important to sit and practice and to really start learning how to understand the tools. Uh but wanna be able to at least name it um in terms of understanding the different levels of bias and why it's important to be able to center that. Um and so we wanted to name equity versus equality. We wanna name the importance of understanding implicit bias. And we also wanna name understanding racism and what racism is. And I'll turn that over to Gloria.
Thank you, Leon. So in in the next few slides, we'll focus on racism, as Leanne mentioned, and the system of racism and power. And systems of oppression and anti-racism. Um so in this slide, it it really explains that racism is a system of oppression based on race that is used. To advantage uh of white people, to the advantage of white people and the disadvantage of black, indigenous and people of color. It's different from discrimination, prejudice and bias. Uh because really racism requires the use of institutional power and or authority to create policy practices and procedures that create. And perpetuate racial inequities. Uh individuals can hold and act upon racist prejudice and ideas, but racism is a system of power. That advantages, again, white people over black, indigenous and people of color. Next slide? So racism, again, is system, right? Individuals can act upon racist ideas um to justify and uphold the system. Uh but racism does not exist at both an individual and um and a systemic level. Um and racism creates uh race and racial, uh a race, racial hierarchy and not other way around. It occurs when an expression of racial prejudice emerges from a more powerful privileged location in the hierarchy. And is directed at an individual group uh uh in less, in a less powerful privileged uh position. Um so I mean, I think looking at the work that you do every day as city leaders, right? You are at a place of power um and privilege when you're making policies um uh and really part of the system. Um and so it doesn't not only um relate to social attitudes towards um a non-dominant ethnic and racial groups. But also to social structures and actions which oppress, exclude, limit and discriminate against uh individuals and groups. Um just like what we saw in the house we live in documentary. Uh it can be seen uh in discriminatory laws, uh residential segregation, uh poor healthcare. Uh inferior education, unequal economic economic opportunity, and the exclusion and distortion of the perspectives of non-dominant groups. Next slide? Um so as, you know, the opposite of racist is not not racist, it's anti-racist. That's the term uh we use. Um and it, racism creates policies and practices and procedures that. Uh produ- uh that produce or sustain racial inequity between racial groups. And moving really towards racism uh generates racist ideas to support and justify racial inequity. And anti-racism creates policies and practices and procedures, and that's all stuff you have uh uh areas in which you have control over. That produce or sustain racial equity between uh racial groups. Um and anti-racism generates um anti-racial um ideas to support and justify racial equity. Um so what does racial equity require? Um it's closing the gap so that race does not predict. Uh one success while also improving outcomes for all. And um targeted strategies um to focus on improvements for those who are worse off. And moving beyond um just services and focus on root causes uh of changing um policies, institutions and systems. Next slide? Um so um we're shifting our questions from individuals to systems now. Uh and so we're moving from blame, right? Who is racist? Um to really looking at what's causing the racial um inequities. Um from moving from intentions, what do, what did they mean? What was their attitude to effects? What were the actions? What were the impacts? And moving from prejudice to um uh what beliefs made them do it? To more like, more uh to systems, what institutions are responsible uh for the inequity? Uh moving from grievance, how can we fix what just happened? Uh to solutions, uh what uh proactive strategies and solution, solutions can we offer? Next slide? So racism and racial disparities are everywhere, right? So, racism and racial disparities are everywhere, right? Um, and they're within education, uh, criminal justice, uh, employment, housing, uh, arts and culture, health disparities, um, environment. Uh, and so, we need to understand that racial disparities are, exist in every aspect of our life. And an example of that is, uh, infant mortality, um, a life expect, expectancy. Uh, race has the power to predict and even determine one's success. Uh, and that presents our society, our cities across the country, all of us, with some unique challenges. And so, the next slide really just focuses on, um, the, is the data that reminds us that even when controlling, you know, for race, it's still, race is still the strongest predictor of outcomes. This article, uh, and this slide is from NPR and it highlights, uh, particular and persistent disparity in black maternal, uh, death rates in comparison to white women across income and education levels. And then the next few slides, uh, really, the next slide, um, highlights, um, uh, different areas in which we still continue to see, um, racial disparities. Double the unemployment rate of white Americans, uh, disproportionality, um, within our US prison population and unequal graduation, uh, rates and the list goes on. And then the next slide talks about the median, uh, family wealth. Uh, today, the racial wealth gap is stark and it continues to worsen. White family, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, uh, Latino family, six thousand, six hundred, and a black family, three thousand, six hundred. Next slide. So, racial equity requires rethinking and really restrategizing government's approach to solving problems. And it requires systems to change, uh, that question the origins and the impact of the status quo and actively and explicitly addressing the multitude of variables, uh, systems and policies, practices and procedures and people that have perpetuated this inequity. You know, I really, uh, John Powell was in the, the video that we saw earlier. Um, he, he's the professor and the director of Othering and Belonging Institute and developed this concept of targeted universalism. And it, it really is a, an important concept, particularly for our government leaders. Um, and it really talks about a way to develop strategies that help all groups, uh, reach a shared or universal goal through a deep focus on equity, uh, when choosing and designing interventions and, uh, understanding progress and outcomes. Um, for example, in education, uh, the Seattle Public School, uh, System in their strategic plan, you know, they set a universal goal, uh, of every student receives a high-quality, world-class education and graduates, um, prepared for college, career and community-ready. Uh, and to better serve and to get to that goal, um, they focus on African-American males, uh, who are the furthest from achieving that goal. Uh, so the district, um, has refined their own systems and their structures and establishing high expectations by, expectations by providing social emotional supports for, um, black males. And, uh, increasing teacher retention, uh, diverse, uh, diversity within their, uh, teachers, uh, which will ultimately get to that universal goal, right? To benefit the entire student body. So, that's an, an example of targeted universalism and when you're looking at your policies and systems and procedures, um, a, a really important focus, um, when you're talking about racial equity. Um, the next slide, um, systems of oppression, uh, they overlap, right? I mean, I, uh, as Michael suggested, uh, mentioned, right? With her, with his, uh, child, right? It is, um, while we lead with race, uh, we must consider these overlaps if we are to implement truly anti-racist equitable policies and produce equitable, uh, solutions. Uh, we must collect data that includes race, class, gender, identity, sexual orientation and disability to identify, uh, the compound inequities and measure the impact of policies to promote the intersectional, intersectional of racial equity. So, for example, a housing policy that benefits poor black men may not benefit, uh, poor black women. And a housing policy that benefits, uh, poor black women may not benefit poor disabled, uh, black women. Next slide. Yep, that was, you're on mute, Aliyah.
Yeah, thank you Gloria. Um, and so, anti-racism is a term, you know, uh, that get, has been elevated by the work of, uh, Ibram Kendi. And so, just, this is a quote from Ibram Kendi that, that to the extent that as we talk about anti-racism, it's really important to understand racism, uh, as a descriptive word, not as a pejorative or an insult, right? It's not trying to call an individual a racist, it's understanding, as Gloria was saying, uh, the space of being anti-racist is being in a self-reflection, recognition, admission, fundamentally a self-critique space. Uh, and so, this quote, a racist when charged with racism will say, I'm not a racist, no matter what they said or did. An anti-racist would be willing to confess and recognize what they just said or did was in fact racist. Um, and not seeing it as, again, as an insult, but understanding, when we talk about racism is really understanding that system, uh, level that, uh, that, uh, Gloria was talking about. Um, and so, we, again, we would, um, part of what we wanted to do, um, is give you a, a full sense of the kind of, the work that needs to happen as you normalize, um, lay the foundation for that, um, as you continue to build the space. While also just acknowledging, normalizing is really important first because it's a space of how do you get comfortable talking about race? As you use shared language, understand that shared history. But then as you start to learn to get comfortable, operationalizing is a space where you start learning how to use tools. How do you start to have the conversations that move you from intent? We don't want to, we don't want to see, um, the, the, those disparities or potential disparities in our city. It's really measuring the impact. And, and that's where we walk through a tool, you know? This is a, this is an example of a tool that we use, uh, as we work and provide training to cities. It's much more intentional about walking through critical steps of questions that's centering the voices of your community, particularly your black and your indigenous and your people of color, their experiences, their voices. As you look at your results, as, as you look at your data, as you understand the strategies that you're trying to put forth, as you think about how to implement it, as you think about the ways of communicating and holding yourselves accountable. There's so many different ways where you could start using the racial equity tool. As you look at your complaint-based systems, as you look at your contracting policies and procedures, as you look at your local fines and fees structures, as you look at zoning and permitting, as we've mentioned earlier, as you also look at your public and recreational spaces, there's a lot of ways to start really practicing, but it does require you getting comfortable talking about race. If you're not comfortable talking about race and really centering it, uh, the tool is not useful, right? And that's why the normalizing is so important in the work that you do. Uh, and then the last piece is just how do you get organized? What's the work you can do as city leaders, uh, to get organized, thinking about the, the structures that need to be in place as elected officials? We put out a, a guide to really show examples of how electeds are leading in this space across the country from how do you set the example, uh, how do you create spaces of listening and public declarations like the ones you guys have already made? Um, really a way of setting the example or thinking about dedicated infrastructure as you think about creation of that ready commission. Another example of the work that you're doing, how do you start committing to making policy change and systems change? Or even working towards developing a racial equity plan? Uh, so there are a number of, of examples that we have been, uh, profiles that we've captured across the country about ways cities are getting organized, but just acknowledging that there's no, no one city has figured this out. That everyone is on this journey and, and in different spaces and there's a lot to learn from other cities as you guys continue to kind of get organized with the launching of your commission. Um, and, and, and starting to think about what we do know as folks start, as you get organized, how you think about how this plays out within your city, kind of the core team that needs to be a part of this? And how do you think about the interdepartmental teams and the work that needs to happen to kind of build out work accountability agreements and departmental work plans and, uh, even using racial equity tools will be so important, uh, to the work. And so, you know, wanting to make sure that as we are, are on this journey with you, that we will, uh, continue to constantly look for ways to continue to support you and the work that you're doing. Uh, we'll send out as a follow-up, um, places where you can continue to do more learning, more resources, you know? Things that you could be doing to take action from good podcasts, good articles, good films that we think are good. We'll send that out as a follow-up and even things you can do, your own individual, uh, space that you're, you know, already in in terms of how you're asking questions and, you know, as you guys were today, being very open-minded. Um, and just excited about the commitment and the space that you're in as you're kind of wrapping up. Know that you guys have been gracious with us as we have been sharing with you and you allowed us to kind of at least do some kind of final reflection, uh, final kind of summarizing of the, of a lot of the normalizing language. And just wanted to see if there are kind of any final reflections, um, as you guys are wrapping up, as you're sitting with, we know it's a lot of content that we throwed at you, but just seeing if you guys have any kind of final reflections.
One, one quick question that I think may benefit all my colleagues is, um, as we proceed with the ready commission, um, do you have any recommendation of, uh, of, of, of what criteria do we use to choose people who should be on that commission? And, and something I'm having trouble with, and I've mentioned this in the past, is how do we not use racism in the choosing of the ready commission? What I mean by racism is not necessarily in the negative context. How do we do, it's difficult. You certainly want to, want to be as inclusive so that you can cover a, as many different perspectives as you can. But does that mean we make sure we get a black person on it, a Asian person on it? And when we start to do that, are we participating in racism? And I'm having a little problem with that.
I understand that, Mike.
Can I caution, I'm not sure, I, I just don't want us to be in violation of the Brown Act here because that's going to be a future agenda topic that's not necessarily agendized for this meeting. Randy or Aaron, if you could speak, I just don't want us to run afoul of the, the Brown Act on this, on this question. I, I apologize, I think a very important question, Mike, don't get me wrong. I just, if Randy or Aaron, if you could speak to that, make sure we're not running afoul of anything.
Oh, I, um, our city attorney right now is not on the line. Um, and, and I see, um...
Let me ask the question another way. Let me ask the question another way, Matt, that's a little safer. What criteria has been used in the past? You're at the National League, um, when we formed this, uh, I remember Randy distinctly saying, this isn't the first rodeo, this is being done across the United States. So, are you aware of any, of, of criteria that's been used in order to have a successful commission?
Yeah, we can, uh, let me ask it a couple of ways and I'll have Gloria share about the work that happened in Madison as well as you guys created your, uh, the, the structures there. There, there definitely is no one-size-fits-all to how you organize it. Let me just say that in terms of what we know and how, um, how you design it. Um, what we have found to be the most effective is when you're, again, uh, as you're, if you're leaning into racial equity, how are you centering the voices of those in your community? How are you centering the voices of your black, uh, black residents, your indigenous residents and people of color? And, and how are you using that to inform you as you're making those decisions? And what's the space you're creating to be able to do that and not putting the pressure on you, you being able to figure out what the right criteria is? Effective racial equity work is centering their voices, hearing and getting feedback and using that feedback to help guide your decision. Uh, and that then ends up taking many different forms in cities when they're very effective at centering those voices and hearing from the community might not be the same outcome that you wanted, right? And so, in one case, the recommendation that came to a city, uh, this, um, uh, the decision was, well, the, 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 the council uh, made appointments to who chaired the commission. Um, and, and they were very intentional about diversifying the, the, the leadership of the who chaired it, it ended up being four co-chairs. And then the co-chairs then, because they were rooted in the community, they were much more effective at being thoughtful about how to fill the rest of the, of the task force. And so, the council didn't have to approve it, you really empowered the community in that space to then figure out who, they ended up being like twenty-three other folks that served on that commission, right? That was kind of, uh, kind of one model where that, uh, you know, where that worked well for that city, right? And Gloria, you want to share an example of, of maybe a model that, of Madison's model or another one that you know of?
Yeah, I, I can talk about Madison, I, in Madison, we did a number of ways. Um, we did focus, as, as Leon mentioned, around, um, you know, an African-American male, uh, for example. But, you know, we, we also focused on around organizations, right? So, a representative from the, uh, Urban League, um, somebody who represents the, uh, faith community, um, someone who represents the LGBTQ community, somebody who, um, so really just to try to really be inclusive and bring as many diverse voices to the table, um, uh, was important. And we also used our own employees, I think that, uh, that was important. Uh, bringing, bringing in together a very diverse group of employees, um, uh, who, who worked, uh, for the city of Madison, were committed to this work to really start building that structure, um, and who have connections within their own communities, uh, to, uh, you know, put forth recommendations. Uh, and then, um, the council, um, and the mayor, uh, were able to select, um, individuals based on the recommendations that came through. And that's how we did it, but there's a number of creative, um, ways to do that.
Just two quick follow-ups if I, if I may. Um, if you have any information regarding that, because we're going to be working on this in two weeks from now, that'd be so helpful, well, one or two different examples, um, that maybe we can build from. And then, Mr. City Manager, maybe you can get a, uh, an opinion from the city attorney. I, I, you know, I don't want to run afoul of starting to talk about race and then violate somebody's rights because I made a decision based on race. It's a real conundrum and, and I think Peter needs to address that.
I can't say that, um, I, I can't say with the city of Madison, when we implemented our, our Madison Police Department Review Committee, um, it was really diverse, uh, the city council, um, really designated different areas in which they were interested in, uh, representation. Um, and we, 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 uh, found ourselves, uh, really, um, not having a white male at the table. Um, and so, uh, that came up as part of a, a, a challenge, um, that it was so diverse and so inclusive that we did not, we, we, we did not have a white male represent, represented. Um, and, uh, there was not an issue, um, uh, in, in the city of Madison with that. Uh, later on, we did, uh, appoint somebody, um, to fill that role, but, um, it just so happened that it worked that way.
Councilmember Ron, uh, I'm beginning to see the wisdom of your idea of going from having seven to eleven. I just thought I'd mention that and, um, I may mention that when we, uh, have the meeting. Uh, but, Mr. City Manager, did you hear what I, 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 I mentioned about the attorney opinion?
Yes, sir, I will follow up with Peter, um, immediately.
I have nothing more, thanks for letting me ask those questions.
All right, and I'll, I'll thank you, my, uh, Michael for that. And the only thing I would just acknowledge is that you don't want the perfect here to be the enemy of the good, right? You're not trying to get this, right? And, and that's really important. And again, having that posture of self-reflection and critique, and if you're getting pushback from the community, just realizing, okay, maybe there's some adjustments we need to make, but, uh, going in with some intentionality, I think, as you're doing now and we can share some models, um, as you're thinking about your structure, I think is, uh, you know, the, uh, is, is the right step forward.
Thank you.
Any other final reflections? Yep, Zach?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I wanted first to say thank you, uh, to you, Leon, and to Gloria and Ian as well for this. And, and then hon- honestly, thanks to my colleagues for just leaning into this uncomfortable conversation and, and, uh, and, and really tackling some of the work that, uh, that needs to be tackled, to be honest, we just, we need to do this. Um, you know, that very first question of can we end inequality is, um, you know, uh, a person who I consider a good friend this morning said oftentimes that first step is the most difficult. Um, we've made that first step, um, and I think we'll continue to keep making steps and walking through this as a community. Um, and really, I'm hopeful, um, to see us leaning in and Leon, you've used that term quite a bit, we use that at home around the dinner table. It's like, lean in, let's, let's have this conversation that we have not been having, uh, in our family or community for quite some time. Knowing that, I know we have a lot of work to do, but I'm proud of, uh, staff and the, the team that we have and, and, and the council that's here. We're going to see a couple of new council members, um, in, in, in the not-too-distant future. So, I'm looking forward to them embracing this and leaning into it and then as the community lean in as well. And we can really, um, we can really move the needle and we can really work towards the, the optimist in me ending, uh, racism and racial inequality in our community. I mean, that's, that's our, um, that's our task at hand, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for those reflections, Zach. Mary Ann, did you have any final reflections?
Well, I, I may be the odd quote-unquote man out, but I, I don't find these conversations difficult. I find them stimulating and very thought-provoking and, you know, they make me consider everything, you know, about everything that I think about, racial issues and, and how other people feel. And I'll just share with you really quick. When I was in Washington for the Obama's both inaugurations, but the first one was most striking because I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors and they have at the same time every year. So in just my years, I just happened to hit those presidential inaugurations. And so in the afternoons of those long morning sessions, I would get out, the hotel was literally two blocks from the White House. And everything was prepared, bleachers were up, manhole covers were welded shut. Literally the inauguration was one day away. And I would, I was walking down to the White House and I would spend my time in front of the White House watching other people. And I saw more African-Americans than I'd ever seen in one place and families that gathered three and four generations and grandma in a wheelchair. And it was ten degrees, it was freezing cold. The only way you could get a picture of the White House was to go to either one of the two guard gates because there was so many bleachers up and so many trucks and broadcasting vehicles. And so to see these families kneeling at the gate, praying and singing, and the atmosphere was unbelievable. And so I spent most of the afternoons there acting as photographer. And I would take families who showed up, I would step out and take the pictures of those families. And they were coming from all around the world and all over the country. And so I got to meet wonderful people and they were telling me that for the first time they felt like they were a part of this country. And that just made me ache. It just made my heart ache that people would live here and, and experience what, all that we have and the freedom we have in America and still feel like it isn't their country. And so it really did open my eyes. And so I'm, I'm really comfortable with these conversations and I think whatever we can do to alleviate those feelings that people have and, and, you know, make sure that they realize they're included and that they're important and that they matter, that they're viable, they're a valuable part of our community. I think that's the goal. And I think we should set the goal of trying to end, you know, end racism and inequality. Might not get there, but I think we need to work as if we will get there.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And Matt?
Yeah, just a quick couple of thoughts. One was, you mentioned some of the tools and things, you know, as we start looking at our own policies and practices, ordinances, resolutions, things that we've done as a city, although again, we have a truncated history compared to some, we may have adopted some things that aren't, aren't in the best intentions of what we're talking about. So, so I'm looking forward to starting, you know, this, this, this relationship with, with you and the league to be able to have those tools to review, you know, our city. And then hopefully in there is a toolbox for that, that tune-up that, that may be, you know, or will be necessary. So looking forward to that. And, you know, and it also makes me think that too, along that pathway, it would be great to work with you all and learn from other cities as well about the metrics we use for prosperity and success within our community. You know, we often report median and average and trends, ignoring the, the tail end of the spectrum that might be left behind. And so, you know, we need to, we need to have a little bit better perspective on that and, and be able to see what sort of metrics are out there in a different way of measuring our community to, to know that we're, we're having the kind of success that we have, especially now, if we have a baseline today, you know, it would be great to know that, that the policies we put in place today, what the short and long-term effects of, of those might be. So, you know, definitely, definitely important piece for us moving forward. And, and again, thank you all for, for coming out here and, and supporting us with, with this effort.
Yeah, well, thank you for those reflections. And I did just, just acknowledge that the normalizing space that we did with you today is kind of a starting point. By no means do we assume that you guys are now experts and are comfortable launching into talking about race and racial equity, but it's a journey, right? I think Mary Ann used that word that you guys are on, and that's so important. Gloria, you have any final reflections?
No, I'm just, you know, as I said before, I'm really impressed at how, how much you all leaned in and you're excited about this work. I'm excited to see you get, get working on looking at your policies and procedures and really infusing racial equity with, within your work. And so thanks for, the conversation was just excellent. And thanks just for, for just being you and not being afraid to express, you know, your thoughts around this issue of race. So, thank you.
And Ian, you have any final reflections?
I think I want to echo most of what you and Gloria just shared. Just thank you all. And as Leon covered toward the end there, this is maybe the beginning, maybe the middle for everyone here, depending on where we are, but trying to strive for anti-racism requires action every day and in any given moment. And the more we learn that context and the history that informs where we are and why things are the way they are and how that influences us and the decisions we could make, the better we're, I think all going to be for one another and for our communities. And I heard that from all of you, which was really encouraging. So I'm excited to see where that continues and really, really glad to be a part of it today.
And thank you, Ian. And just my final reflections to just my appreciation and gratitude to each of you guys for taking the time, giving us some extra time to get through it. Very much appreciate your willingness to really try to lean in and just want to acknowledge that this work is still, this is tough work. You know, if you're, if you're not uncomfortable, then you're probably not doing the work just as a facilitator, because this work requires you getting uncomfortable, coming up and having conversations that we don't normally have. Because what we want to do is not produce the same solutions. As you start looking at these policies, you want to be coming up with policies that are not leading you to the same outcomes. And it's doing this work, we know that that tends to happen in doing this work. And so I want to end, my team knows I like to end on this exercise. This is an exercise I'd like for you all to do. This is a math exercise. So I want you to think of a number in your head from one to 10. Go and tell me what it is. Kind of keep your number in your head. If you're bad at math, pick a low number in, in math. All right? Zach, so you got your number? All right, now that you have that number multiplied by nine. You got your number? All right. Now that you have that number added together, so if it was twenty-three, it's two plus three equals five, right? So whatever that number is added together. Got your number? All right, now that you have that number minus five from it.
Okay.
Minus what? Minus what?
Minus five from it, minus five? Okay. Now that you have that number converted to a letter, so if it's one, it's A, if it's two, it's B, so convert the number to a letter. All right, you got your letter? All right, so the, now you have the letter, think of a country that starts with that. Got your country? Yeah, last letter of the country, think of a animal that starts with that. Got your animal? All right, last letter of the animal, think of a fruit that starts with that. Got your fruit? All right, let, how many, how many were thinking Denmark kangaroo and oranges?
I was!
All right, so let me tell you, I want to end on that because this was, I usually think it's a light note, but it also continues to challenge us, right? Which is, the math was intended to be an exercise, right? And it's, and everyone, if you did your math right, should have gotten to four. If you didn't get to four, then we don't provide that training. I used to, I liked to, another problem, right? But if you got the four, you should have been starting off with D. And so the math was intended to be a distraction, I like to say, but life is a distraction, right? You may not realize consciously you're going to get to four, but you got to four. Now, now that you, if you did it right, and so if you know that, how many countries actually start with the letter D? Turns out there are four. So there's Denmark, Dominican Republic, Dominica, and Djibouti in Africa. So there are four different choices. Dubai is not a country and the Democratic Republic of the Congo doesn't officially qualify as a D country, right? So it turns out that there are four countries that officially start with the letter D. So doing this exercise, when I do this training, it turns out eighty to ninety percent, almost like in this case, almost a hundred percent of you say Denmark. Denmark kangaroo and oranges, right? So we all say Denmark in this country for the eighty to ninety percent of the trainings I've been doing for the last six years, right? And then I was like, okay, well, how many, how many animals start with the letter K? Turns out that there's sixteen different options. There's koala bear, there's kingfish, kingfish is another kind of animal. There's other names that also start with K that I don't even recognize, but there's so many other names that are out there. But in this country, doing this training, for as many trainings that we've done, eighty to ninety percent of you say Denmark kangaroo. And the same thing with, with fruits that start with the letter O, turns out there are six different fruit options. And one of them is olive, if you knew that olive is a fruit, right? It turns out that we still, we could have come up with a million different scenarios, but we still, eighty to ninety percent, in this case, a hundred of you, hundred, hundred percent of you say Denmark kangaroo and oranges, right? And so the reason why I end with that, because if we're going to do this work, you've got to get uncomfortable, you've got to be willing to get explicit to have these conversations so you're not coming up with solutions that lead you back to Denmark kangaroo and oranges. Right? And that's the pushing of the thinking and the conversations you got to be willing to do as you're on that journey. And I hope that leaves you in a fun way, remembering we got to keep pushing ourselves. We got to keep coming up with solutions and not lead us back to Denmark kangaroo and oranges. So on that note, thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's funny.
From Tim Edwards, you're welcome to close the meeting.
All right, then I will accept the motion.
Move adjournment.
All in favor? Have a great day, everybody. Thank you, Randy, Aaron, everybody.